This meeting is being recorded.
We begin without Mika. So.
Mika.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The first part of it will be a work session where we can consider four Board of Trustees candidates. They've each submitted a letter of interest and answered questions from a survey that we put together. The reason that we have the opening is that one of our trustees has graduated to become County Commissioner. We're very proud of Gina Lucrezzi for making that bold step. That leaves her, leaves some big shoes to be filled by somebody. And we look forward to hearing from each of you. So we have, we have four candidates for this position. And they are Thomas Brown, Becky Hill, Chris Sturm, and Nick Williams. So Thomas, we'd like to start with you, please.
Okay.
So you would have about five minutes to introduce yourself. Tell us why you are running for this seat and why you're the best person for the job.
That's perfect. Thank you, Mayor, Board of Trustees. It's nice to see you all again down the step, audience. On Paula's note, she said to kind of talk a little bit about the role of the trustee. So I thought I'd spend just a few short minutes talking about the role and function of the trustees as I interpret it and understand it. And then I'll talk a little bit of why I think I might be the best candidate for the position. Role of trustees generally has a fairly broad range of responsibilities. And it kind of runs a broad spectrum. Basically deals with strategic direction, guidance and policy. fiduciary responsibilities, obviously, oversight, advocacy, public relations, ethics, and basically avoiding conflicts of interest. So when you look at each one of those things, what's the strategic, what is strategic direction? You're really looking at mission, what is the mission of the town? What is the mission of the Board of Trustees and how do they carry out that mission? You're looking at vision, both short term, long term, and also immediate, you have a crisis or an emergency response. And then you're doing planning with respect to UDC. Code, development, those types of things are an important component, a strategic direction that the trustees give to the town. Evidence in policy, that's looking at development. How do we develop? How should we develop? What's the processes that we go through? And are we sure that we're meeting those processes as we're, as we're carrying them out? Compliance is an important component as well. Basically, are we, are we able to ensure that we're using the money properly with respect to the taxpayers' dollars? Are we complying with laws that are required by the state or federal? And that's an important component in concert with your legal staff. But ultimately, the trustee is the final decider. Fiduciary is critical, the annual budget that you do, you guys just finished a few months or so ago. You got to manage the assets, you got to pay for staff. You got to deal with issues and problems that are going to cost unexpected dollars that you're going to have to find from someplace else sometimes. You may not have that specifically ready to go for those American events. And then you got to support the stakeholder interest to the community. And that's an important component to listen to them and be able to determine what can be funded specifically this year, but might have to be deferred and how that process goes forward. Oversight is a leadership responsibility, basically oversight of town staff and oversight of the functions within the town. And then risk management, emergency response. You know, a flood appears on Pleasant Avenue, you're going to have to pay dollars, since I live there. And you're having to pay dollars to mitigate that response. Those things cost and that's risk management. Therefore, advocating for the town, you're basically the spokesperson, the trustee is the one that's out there promoting the town with respect to the business community, with respect to our education, with respect to our finances, with respect to our functions. And then ultimately, public relations, telling the community what they need to know. Tell them sometimes, sometimes that they may not necessarily like, have to know. There are a lot of trade offs that go with that process. There's also a positive side with public relations to basically promote and present the community to the best perspective. So our visitors and residents can better live here and enjoy. And then finally, avoid conflicts of interest. Don't be biased, be fair in your decision-making process. Last but not least, maintain an ethical composure and an ethical policy to ensure that you meet the needs and interests of the citizens of Unavista. So with all that, why would I think I should be appointed to this board? I've got 30 years' experience, both as a defense leader and manager. I've been a businessman and a business manager for about six years. I'm an expert on local and state government policies. I've been a participant, as well as a leader, in various commissions and boards, everything from an environmental commission to your planning commission, to being selected by Governor Polis and nominated by the, and approved by the legislature to the Veterans Community Living Centers to basically be a commissioner, which I chair, which I am the vice chair. So I understand how government works. I understand how processes work, understand how difficult your job is. And it's a challenge and I think that's an important component for a candidate in this position. I have a lifetime of public service. Part of that was, I ran for office ten short months ago. Many of you were part of that process. We got to talk to a lot of people, we got to engage with a lot of stakeholders. We got to have that discussion and engage in that process. And ultimately, I think the community got to know all of us, including myself. So they kind of know what my positions are, what I see, what I think. They've got a good perspective with our press out there, as well as the candidate forums that we participated in. Finally, I believe I'm a visionary, very mission-focused, very task-oriented. And last but not least, I care about the citizens of Unavista. And if I were to be selected for this position, I would definitely always look for the health, welfare, and wellbeing. And that's my position and my thoughts for you today. Look forward to your decision and questions.
Thank you, Tom. Does anyone have questions? Any trustees have questions for Tom?
Hi Cindy.
Hi. You have done a lot for our community. You were involved in many things.
Yes.
Right now, you're currently on planning and zoning, is that correct?
This will be my second term. You just renominated me a month ago, so this will be my, I've been three years with planning and zoning. I was on Transportation Advisory Board in the county for three years. I did not sign up for this round as they're looking at some major readjustments and revisions, so I didn't sign up for the town this year.
And reading through your thing, you were involved in the American Legion and the Chamber of Commerce. And are you spreading yourself too thin?
Well, one of the reasons I decided not to sign up for the Transportation Advisory Board was for that very reason.
Okay.
In the process, I also know that if I were to get nominated, I wouldn't be able to stay on planning and zoning. So that would, which would be an important responsibility that would be taken on. So no, I don't think so. I'm pretty active, pretty busy, my life will attest to that. I like, I like being involved, I like participating. As I said, I was a defense leader. And for much of my career, I spent a significant portion of time dealing with hostages and crisis events post-Lincoln 11, looking for fate disposition. I used to work significant hours as part of the process. Matter of fact, it's a lot less now than it was then. And so, no, I don't believe that I would be in the process. I understand that there's a lot of time involved and I'm willing to give that time and participate as fully as possible as a Board of Trustee member.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other trustee questions?
I had one, and I think you just answered it, so I'll ask again.
Okay.
Why do you want to do this job?
Why do I want to do this job? As I said, I've been a public servant for 40 years. I think this job is probably the most crucial job of my career, in my experience. Because this is where you have the trust of 2,500 residents in this process. And you have to deal with and respond to their needs and interests to the best of your ability. Apply all of your skills that I've learned over the last 40 years as a, as a defense official, you know, a public servant. And also as a, involved with various boards and stuff. And so you have to be able to apply those skills. But it's here to give back to this community, a great community. I'd like to continue to expand that, provide my thoughts and concepts, take their thoughts and concepts, and try to turn that as a Board of Trustee into reality. Hope for that answer.
Anybody else? Tom?
Thanks, appreciate it.
Welcome to, we'll stick around while the other candidates.
I'm not going.
Okay, next up is Becky Hill. Welcome Becky.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, happy to be here. Again, my name is Becky and I have been living in Unavista. We moved here almost four and a half years ago. And I'm sure like many of you, we just fell in love with this town very quickly. It was the very first place that I felt like I could really call home and put down roots. And that was mainly, I mean, of course, we live in such a beautiful setting. But it was mainly because of our wonderful community and the welcoming that we got right away. And now my husband and I both own small businesses here in town. We have really found so many beautiful connections in that way. And I'd say for the past, like, six-ish months, I felt really more and more called to be part of the community and play a more active role in shaping our future. And I wasn't sure what that looked like beyond just like volunteering or donating baked goods to different causes or things like that. But when Gina's seat opened up and I read more about the Board of Trustees and looked into it, I really felt such an alignment with this role. And not only all of the things that aren't taken care of in terms of policymaking, but I really think that my skill set, as it relates to different professional backgrounds, would be a huge asset to, to the board. I mentioned small businesses, so I launched my micro bakery business, Heart Baker, in January of 2021. So just like four months after we moved here, again, we were pretty sure we were set. And since then, I've participated in the farmer's market. It's been a wonderful way to just meet so many people and be really immersed in the community and meet other small business owners. And I do a lot of collaborations with other businesses in town. Worked at the Asian Palate for a while, we did a lot of pop-ups there. And just, as many people know, that's such a wonderful community hub. But yeah, there's been a lot of opportunity to meet other business owners and do a lot of really cool collaborations and pop-ups in that respect. I also own a health coaching business and that's been mostly remote work. But I've been really grateful that in the past year, I've been, I've had a lot more clients right here in Unavista. So it's wonderful to just be able to support those around me. With that too, just from a health coaching background, I have a really compassionate approach to really unique goals and things like that. So I really always try to take an unbiased approach to decision-making and supporting others in general. And so I think, you know, that rule is just supernatural for me. And I know that that's, that's really important in terms of being a trustee member. And then, I guess I'll say too, before I launched those businesses, I worked about eight years in advertising, which that culture is, is not for me. But I learned so much in terms of cross collaboration with different departments, looking at, so I was in media and strategy. So strategizing for different campaigns based on client goals. Looking at multimillion dollar national media budgets and figuring out strategic allocation in terms of what would work best in terms of media and reaching those client, client goals and things like that. So lots of opportunity there in terms of working with very diverse groups of people and understanding the different backgrounds and goals of campaigns and uniquely making a campaign that would have fit that approach. So yeah, that's a lot about me. But again, I'm just happy to be here and I, I really think that those, those skill sets from all those different professional backgrounds make me a great candidate for this role and bringing a unique perspective to the groups. And I guess I'll say too, I'm really excited about the idea of working with a team on decision-making. Because in my business, it's like a one-woman show. So I'm, I'm looking forward to the opportunity to potentially just collaborating on different policies and learning so much about the town as we go.
You have a good understanding of what the Board of Trustees does versus what we don't do?
Yes, yeah. Well, aside from reading through the handbook, I, I do have a good idea of what's done. And just looking back through past packets from meetings and attending meetings over Zoom, I have a good understanding.
Trustee questions? So have you, oh, go ahead, please go ahead and help.
Have you served on any kind of boards in the past and had the joy of board decision-making?
I haven't served on a.
I was sarcastic on it.
Oh.
The joy of board decision-making, just curious what your, what's your experience with board governance?
So I don't have any direct experience with board governance. I've done, I guess, in my advertising background, I've led different organizations in terms of nonprofit work. We were able to allocate media dollars when clients contributed them to different causes. So I was the leader in terms of getting people together and, you know, creating more of a nonprofit campaign. But in terms of government work, I don't have such direct experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Becky. I imagine as a small business owner in a small community, you have a good amount of relationships with other business owners. I'm not sure we have any business owners on the board right now. Can you talk a little bit about why you think that might be a valuable voice for our town board? Like having a business owner in relationships like that?
Yeah, definitely. I think that because I've fostered so many different relationships with people that it's kind of an easy go-to to get perspective if there are some small business matters or even just policies as it relates to Main Street or, you know, businesses around town to get perspective. I think that because of that background too, and just like being typically the really active person that reaches out to create those collaborations, I'm really used to making those connections. And I think that's so important when you're trying to just get background on different policies or maybe not understanding something fully and wanting to gain more knowledge. So yeah, I think as it relates to the skill set and the relationships I have already, it'd be valuable.
Thank you.
Thank you, good to see you. Other questions? Maggie, did you have a question? I see your hands up.
I did, thanks so much, Mary Fay. Hi Becky, sorry, I can't be there in person tonight, but I'm so glad to have you all with us tonight. I just would love to hear a little bit about how you feel about the growth of BV over the last four years since you've moved up.
Yeah, I know that I'm, four years sounds like a long time for me because I've moved around so much. But in terms of the growth, I've seen, you know, just different new businesses popping up. From the farmer's market perspective, it's been so wonderful to start with like three vendors. When we, when I first started the farmer's market and there were like 12 last year. So that's pretty big growth, hopefully that, that keeps growing. I know that there's different concerns that are voiced with members of town as far as concerns about growth and development. And I think that one of the main things that so, that I see in our community as just sort of a grounding aspect is that there is such a focus on wanting to keep that sense of community and closeness while there is town growth and opportunity. So I think that that's really beautiful and something that kind of we can all agree on. Yeah, as far as, as far as other growth and that, yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, for sure.
I have a question that a few years ago Maggie answered yes to this question. And the question is, regardless of whether you're appointed to this position tonight, would you consider running for the position in 2026?
Yes, I was glad to hear that I could potentially run again. I just wasn't sure as far as Gina's seat ending in 2026, I was kind of like, oh, maybe I should wait so I can do a full four years. But yes, I, I do see it as a continuing opportunity.
Good, because that's what Maggie did. She, she was running for the appointment once and then ended up running for trustee. Any other questions for Becky? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Okay, so next is Chris Sturm. Evening, Chris.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for this opportunity to present in front of you this evening. A little bit about myself and then I'll, I'll share some of my experience as a civil servant that I think is, is relevant to being a good trustee. I have a wife and son in town. My son's a demon in eighth grade. I have a bachelor of science degree in environmental health from the University of Georgia, with a focus on water and wastewater treatment. And a master's of science in geography also from the University of Georgia. I started my career in Colorado Water 25 years ago. Public Works Department for a municipality in North Denver. I was a water resource analyst, was in charge of protecting and developing the town's water rights portfolio. Part of that responsibility was serving on the Board of Directors for a ditch company that provided water for about 60,000 acres of farmland. And in that capacity, I was on that board for five years. Helped the board make a lot of decisions about assessments, group budgets, and a lot of capital improvement projects. Some of those that would happen on the fly, unexpected things such as ditch breaches, tunnel failures, things like that. Currently serve as the Watershed Program Director for the State of Colorado. Been in that role for almost 18 years. I worked for the Colorado Water Conservation Board. And I report to a board and have a good understanding of what it's like to do that from the staff side. I, of course, report to a director, she's my boss. But the board is the policymaking authority for our agency. So we spend a lot of time preparing materials for them to approve. But also have a strong understanding of who I work for. It's not that board I report to the board, but work for my director. And certainly understand dynamics of how a board works as far as the town trustees. Staff does not work for the trustees, staff communicates with town administrators. And then he provides direction to staff from that. So I think that's my understanding of, of how that works. It's certainly how it works on my board. I've been on the town's water advisory board for over a year now. I've really enjoyed that. I've worked in watershed health issues in Chaffey County for 18 years. Worked with Invisia Chaffey County and a lot of the nonprofits in the county. And have helped facilitate a lot of the watershed health projects in this area. So I think I've got some pretty good relevant experience. One thing I omitted to say was I was also on the board of the Colorado Riparian Association for 13 years, where I served as president, vice president, and treasurer. That's an organization that puts on a conference for river restoration every year for about 250 folks. So we organized that, managed budget associated with putting that conference on, as well as managing a scholarship fund for graduate students. So thanks for your consideration, really appreciate being in here this evening. And also want to, want to thank the other advocates for coming in because it takes a lot of bravery to get up here and chat with everyone.
All right, you ready for our questions then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are there trustee questions for Chris? I had a question. I would assume that you're pretty much a data-driven person. And I was wondering how you would react to emotional citizen comments?
Yeah. The two things I focus on primarily in my job is data and information. I bring a lot of that to my board. The other piece, which is every bit as big and oftentimes takes up more time, is working with stakeholder collaboratives. And I know that collaboratives doesn't mean everybody gets together and is getting along. Collaboratives are about compromise. So a lot of the work that we do before we get to the data and information processing is working with assembly and then working with those collaboratives to understand the different points of view, developing vision, objectives at the stakeholder level. And then working on the data, developing data, identifying data gaps, building information. So both those things, the social science and the science and engineering are brought together before we make decisions on watershed health issues.
I think you answered a question in the survey about whether you have time for this job.
Yes, you know, my time is divided up into three things, really, three major things, work, family, and personal time. And I'm fully cognizant of the hit that my personal time would take if I were to serve on this Board of Trustees. And I think that I would enjoy it.
Any other questions? Andrew, you have a question?
Livvy made fun of me last night.
No surprise.
Livvy made fun of me last night as the trustee with questions. In your past experience with some of the board governance stuff, could you speak a little bit about your familiarity or the process you go by with reviewing budgets?
Yes.
Reviewing or managing budgets?
Yeah, reviewing or managing budgets. When I was a treasurer for six years of the Riparian Association, I would develop the budget for the board that needed to be approved annually and then report back on our expenses at the end of the year relative to that budget. In my present capacity, I manage anywhere between $10 million to $40 million a year for the Watershed Health Program for the Forest Conservation Board. I put the budget together annually. That goes to technical assistance with consultants that we hire. So we spend a lot of time developing RFPs or RFQs, requests for qualifications, and also have grant programs. Those budgets, I work with our COO at the agency to develop the budget for the program. There's a lot of time spent developing legislation to even get those funds appropriated before we even work on the budget. So that's probably the first step, Andrew. But then, once those funds are appropriated, then we look at the different programs we have, allocate the funding to.
Any other questions?
So you're currently serving on the water board right now, correct?
I'm, I'm not on the board, I report to the board. I'm staff for the Colorado Water Conserv.
For our personal water.
Oh, sorry, I'm currently on the water advisory board.
Okay. So you're a little bit familiar with Unavista and what we've got going for us and what some of our needs could be. And I know the Water Advisory Board has been working on conservation measures and doing other things. So I think that you would realize that being on the board might take a little bit more time. But it, the Water Advisory Board does get into the mud and the dirt and the details. So I, I truly believe that if you were chosen, that you would be able to fulfill the obligation time-wise. And it wouldn't bother you to read a couple hundred pages every few weeks. And it wouldn't bother you to read a couple hundred pages every few weeks. Well, there's
Yep.
There have been times that they've been four and up, yeah.
Read books, yes. I spend a lot of time reading in professional capacity. I spend time reading on the water advisory board. By my estimation, I think this would probably be about four times the, the time commitment that, that water advisory board is right now.
Great. Any other questions for Chris?
Andrew, so I don't really need to ask any questions. Alright, you're cutting me off.
Hey, thanks again for everybody coming out. Um, Chris, I just had a question about, um, one of the questions was in your view, what are the top challenges currently facing? And you included things like water supply and housing and transportation. On that list was also amenities, um, ensure a high standard of living by facilitating amenities that benefit many. Can you tell me a little bit about uh, what that looks like from your opinion?
Um, certainly, thank you. I see a lot of uh, different demographic around town. A friend of mine recently told me that I need to start hanging out with younger people because it's good for me. Actually been hanging out with some of the, the younger farmers in town that have started their own uh, ranching or, or farming uh, vegetable farms. So I think about like, what amenities does the town need for the different demographic? We have retired people, we have younger people coming in, we have professionals working here, lots of different interests. As well as a lot of second homeowners. And I'm, I'm really interested in kind of coming up with ideas where we have amenities that bring that whole demographic together. Uh, so that we can maintain this tight-knit community. Uh, and so some of the things that I think about right away are uh, having a walkable or, or bikeable community. I can't help but think about that because I don't want to take my son to school every day and we live the other side of the highway. Um, but also recreational uh, amenities, different parks around town uh, so that we're serving different areas of town. But also trying to have uh, formal events in the, the different amenities that town offers that brings a nice transect of the demographic together.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Okay, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well now, uh, we have Nick Williams.
Wow. Never seen this before. Curious, I asked my friends, never seen what before? As we stood at the rodeo grounds admiring the outline of Mount Princeton in the dark night. She'd only lived in dense cities and had only learned of stars from the textbooks. But on that night, she could really see them. She suddenly felt like a small part of something bigger. There was a star reminder that even the most ancient human experience, stargazing, is a privilege of dark sky towns like ours. Good evening, everyone. I'm Nick. Thanks for having me tonight. Uh, my wife Maya and I first came to Buena Vista in 2019. Uh, it was on the riverbank at Elephant Rock. But uh, I knew one day this place would be our home. I've worked in finance in a range of disciplines, um, energy at a Fortune 500 down in Denver, transportation at a public research center, and now in consumer finance for the underbanked. Uh, over the past decade or more, I uh, have learned how to manage resources efficiently, how to solve complicated problems, how to make tough decisions with lasting consequences. I believe this town has all the ingredients we need to thrive while ensuring equitable access for our citizens. Shared knowledge, resources and a real penchant for hard work. I want to contribute my skills to the future of Buena Vista with careful planning, open collaboration and stewardship that honors the land we're on. Each of us is inspired by this place. We feel at home in this community. Uh, where persistence through hard winters is rewarded with the warmth of connection around the fireplace. As it's been since our predecessors put down roots 150 years ago. I resonate with the simple yet powerful mission of the town of Buena Vista to provide high-quality, reliable services to our citizens while being good steward of public resources in our natural setting. A key element of this mission is to wisely use what we have. Some of my favorite projects uh, are the restoration of existing infrastructure, like the McGinnis Gym down the street and the master planning of Chicago Ranch, the Tribune Annexation. Uh, encouraging responsible use of our shared resources, the spaces that we uh, share with our neighbors. We have good distances of great stewardship all over town. Uh, the key concerns of the town are economic vitality, sound infrastructure, community and the preservation of our environment. We know our economy well, folks they pump wealth into town during the high season and then things quiet down during the winter. My question is how great is our potential? Uh, $1 million homes are bought and sold all throughout the year. Three quarters of survey respondents said that there are not enough good jobs in BV to raise a family. I think the Chaffey Housing Authority is doing great work. But per the recent CHA presentation last uh, two weeks ago, Chaffey County needs nearly a thousand additional units to catch up. Meanwhile, 30% fewer businesses uh, have renewed their business license last year as compared to 2023. And that's despite four out of five respondents to a community, community engagement survey saying that they think the town should invest more in business incubators. I believe that we can tackle these issues. I think we have all the talent, all of the uh, resources that we need. And we can solve these issues while continuing to ensure water security and uh, access to affordable energy, which is the topic for later this evening. We're great at balancing the wisdom of our predecessors, uh, the self-reliance that our forbears uh, had to depend on with the inevitability of advancement. Just this month, there was a great discussion with the fire chief about proactive management of EV fires uh, at our charging stations. Embracing technology instead of waiting for consequences and trying to deal with it then. In 1899, Buena Vista Board of Trustees ordained construction of a telephone system before 85% of Americans had access to those. Uh, we've always embraced technology and we've always planned proactively for the future. Uh, today's board is stacked with talent. Mayor Fay has had an incredible career as CPA, entrepreneur, public servant. Mika spent a decade fighting for uh, the protection of the Arkansas River. I sat at Devon's table as a stranger and been treated as a friend. We have parents, engineers, organizers across the board who are in touch with the needs and priorities of our community. There's no doubt that our town is guided by credentialed, caring and passionate folks. And I would be honored to sit at the table. Uh, my hope as a trustee is to get to know my, my neighbors on a deeper level and to ensure that BV reaches its potential while protecting what makes it special for the generations to come.
Thank you. Trustees, have any questions?
You're cutting me off.
I'm just wondering if you were at committee, which this is sort of like a committee. And you've got all these different ideas coming at you for a project that you've brought forth. Um, how would you go about evaluating different alternatives? What approach would you take as the kind of the leader of the project?
I think that there are a lot of ways to take in information from our peers. I, I think that we can start with the assumption that uh, everybody here is on the same team and everybody is uh, putting their effort in for the better of the community. I think that there's a risk of design by committee. I, I think that you can make a Frankenstein of a solution because every idea must be included. In a board like this where it is formalized, there's a vote. But I think that there's room for everybody. I think that there may be a piece from each concept or uh, something that we can hash out together and come to a new version of the vision that I had had as the project leader. Everybody's got a unique perspective, background. I mean, I'm, I'm not a parent. I, I didn't grow up here. There are a lot of perspectives that I just will never have. So I would depend on the board and the community to inform those kinds of things. And um, really give everybody a chance to have their needs met and their voices heard in the decision-making.
You mentioned uh, having worked in finance. What, what kind of work have you done in finance? What does that mean?
So I started as an analyst, as many uh, people in finance do, um, three sheet accounting. Understanding what's on the balance sheet, what's our budget, how do we make money at this business? Today I work in a strategy role for a company that offers financial products. Uh, and as part of that, a, a really critical piece of my work is to scale what we're doing up to build something that's really scalable, uh, so that it doesn't break. For us, it's software, but uh, the principles are the same elsewhere. Ensuring that we can afford to build what we're trying to build to ensure that the people we're serving are having their needs met. And bringing that holistic view of, yeah, of course we need to make money. We have to build a reasonable budget. And you know, doing the analysis and the data analytics behind all of that. But we build products, we serve people. And uh, I think the services are first for town. Maybe it's, it, it can have different priorities for a for-profit business. But the capacity of, of my finance background is, is a full spectrum. It's, it's growing revenues, it's reducing costs and uh, finding sources for funding before we get it.
Thank you. So do you have time for this job?
I do. Yeah, I'm, I'm very fortunate. Um, I, I work remotely. I have an incredibly flexible schedule. Other than the wife, my, the time my wife and, and dog demand of me. I'm all for the town. There's plenty of me to go around right now.
Any other questions? Does anybody have any questions for, for any of our prior candidates? Okay, so I guess we're ready to vote.
Give everybody.
So, yeah.
I would like to see.
Yeah, please do.
Four excellent candidates to choose from. Not going to be an easy decision. There's so many times that um, a position has been filled on this board just because there was only enough people to fill the open positions. Any of you that aren't chosen, I would love to see you apply in 26 and run to be on the board so the people in our community have a choice.
Thank you. I agree with you totally.
Absolutely. I would also agree. Thank you for thank you for putting yourself out there and giving us options. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Great. Um, yeah, this is actually kind of a, um, a good process in my view because um, it's, it's different from the regular election in which the broad public makes the choice. But uh, in this case, it's just us. But we're looking for the first two to work well with us.
My name here, was Gina voted in or appointed to her seat?
Well, technically appointed. Didn't she finish out somebody else's term? But they stayed in the first place and then, and then we had an election, but, but there were only the same number of candidates as positions.
Okay.
And you and me and Cindy were all started this. Mr. Hotel California.
That I served, there was 11 candidates positions and the, I felt that that was good for our community because they actually had a, a good choice to choose from.
Yeah, yeah, I thought that was really good. Because there is, there are a lot of activities, as Tom was pointing out, where uh, people want to hear from the candidates. There were 11 of us. That was a lot. Okay, well, good. So trustees, make your selections. Does everyone understand the rules?
I had a question about it. It said the candidate receiving the highest cumulative total plus the number of individual votes received will be counted the winner. So does that mean they're counted twice?
Well, they're getting a, um, a three, two, one score from each of us to begin with. But then, it's the number of people who actually voted for them. So it's not exactly the same.
And so we're, just to be clear, we're not ranking our first, second, third choice. We are assigning points. So our first choice would get a vote of three.
Right.
Measures kind of the importance of the vote and the frequency of the vote. Rather than just a simple total of frequency, you know, it gives a little, adds a better dimension to the vote.
It's our version of ranked choice voting.
Let's go ahead and pass this to Paula. Sorry, please go to Paula.
Uh, yes.
What we'll do is I'll collect them. After you guys all vote, and then I'm going to shuffle them. And then what, we'll just explain what Maggie's going to do. She's going to email her ballot to Brian and I, and then we will duplicate her votes onto that.
It should be on its way soon. I'm putting it on right now.
Thanks, Maggie.
For sure. Thanks to Paula and Brian for figuring this out.
Don't tell it because it's going to shuffle you. We'll shuffle them.
Now your vote is marked.
It's marked.
We're basically going to take a little break now until seven o'clock. We have one more thing in our work session, which is that we'd like to announce the winner of the appointment to our board. And that is Chris Sturm. So Chris, you will now be, or not now, but actually when we get to the business item where you get appointed truly, we would want you to take your seat at the, at the diast here with us. So thank you all very much. And that concludes the work session. Now I'd like to welcome you to the meeting of Board of Trustees of the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado for January 28th, 2025. The time is 7:02 PM. Paula, would you, or Ed, call the role, please?
See, Mayor Fay.
Here.
Trustee Hike.
Here.
Trustee Rice.
President.
Trustee Rose, an hour.
Here.
Trustee Rob.
Here.
And trustee Swisher.
And please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, with liberty and justice for all. Trustees, you have before you agenda for tonight's meeting. And if anyone has any changes that they'd like to make in the agenda. If there are none, I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda as, as written.
Can I make a comment about the agenda?
Sure.
I don't know that this may be pulled out as a business item, but I noticed in Brian's report that the RFP for the housing needs assessment is going out. And just to request that our board could have some visibility into what goes into that RFP. I know we have a lot of questions that will probably not be encapsulated in the RFP that we can't add to, but at least some discussion of what questions are being asked in the means and methods. So I'd just like for us to have some visibility into that process.
That'll be actually in the consent agenda.
I go too early.
A little too early, but. Okay. So I think I heard a motion.
What I meant to say is I would accept the agenda.
Cindy already did it though.
Yeah, Cindy.
I'll say second.
Say second.
Say second, Andrew.
I can second.
Okay, so we're the Swisher and Rice. Now, the consent agenda.
All in favor?
All in favor of passing the, the agenda as written.
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Okay, the motion passes. Now, the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes various items, including minutes of our last meeting. And minutes from the tree advisory board and the planning and zoning commission and the recreation advisory board. It also has reports from the town administrator. And the town treasurer's report this time includes quarterly financial status and an update for the fourth quarter of 2024. Also, there's the airport manager's report and the recreation director's report. Also included in there is a resolution for the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado reappointing members of the tree board, who are Roy Gertsen, Caleb Efta, and Randy Gordon as regular voting members. And appointing Alex Bruce as a regular voting member and Mallory Brooks as an alternate member to the tree board. We have our board of trustees, which takes, you know, a certain amount of energy and time. Also, these boards do. And so I really want to thank all, all these appointees for, for the time that they put in with, with these different boards and advisory committees. So also, we have a resolution of the board of trustees for the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado. Appointing Carly Smith to the Taffey County Multi Jurisdictional Housing Authority. Are there some comments on the consent agenda?
I was so eloquent with it before, I'm afraid to try to repeat myself.
The gist of it is that we want to have some input as, you know, on the RFP for the housing needs assessment. So that we'd be sure that it relates not just to Taffey County, but to, to us as a community as well. Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
So we have Rosenor and Swisher. All in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? That the consent agenda is adopted. Now we enter the part of our meeting in which we take public comments from new members of the community. And each person who has signed in on this clipboard can make a statement up to three minutes long on a topic of importance to them. And one thing that is particularly important tonight is for you to realize that if you want to speak, you need to do it now during public comment. Later, when we get into discussions about the flock cameras or geothermal, those are not public hearings. And so you all will not be able to comment at that point. So if you have comments, sign in now. Thank you.
If anybody else wants to.
Does anyone else want to sign in? Okay, so we'll start in with these. Kevin Pilgrim is our first commenter. Please give your name and address for the record, Kevin.
My name is Kevin Pilgrim. I live at 132 Wind Walker Road. Ready for?
Yes.
I've lived here for eight years and have no plans to leave. I speak only for myself and no one speaks for me. I'm going to read so I can clearly collect my thoughts ahead of time and share them with you tonight. I first ask the board of trustees to listen and seek first to understand what I'm saying and then be understood. I'm here tonight to express my concern after the presentation from the Housing Authority interim executive director. There are good points within the plan. So this is not a full critique of what has been done, but highlighting obvious gaps. My message is this. We cannot solve problems we have by applying the same thinking we used to create the problem. The housing shortage is created by economic pressures, developers' for-profit business model, an economic crisis from fraudulent lending practices prior to the 2008 crash, financial risk, the taxpayer incurred losses. While bankers went on trips, Main Street folks lost homes and jobs and suffered financial stress. This problem was further fueled by economic policy during the pandemic. It gave more money to people with money by forgiving pre-PP loans. When I heard of the presentation, there's a lot of talk about financing and promises of future affordability while still allowing developers to profit from the program. I'm deeply concerned about this message and this plan. I voted for both the measures to fund this program. And I want to see it benefit the people who need it most, not the developers. I ask all of us to look to the old ways, the ways of our founders. My name is Pilgrim. My roots go back to the Mayflower. My way is old. My roots are strong. My way is old, my roots are strong. The problems we face today will be solved through cooperation and community participation, not competition and financing broken promises. There's always somewhere off in the future that people can have homes. There's no reason that people cannot have homes today. The details of how are more complex. I won't pretend to have all the answers, just have ideas other than financing our way out of a financial problem. When I lived in Seattle, I volunteered with Habitat for Humanity. They organized build days with skilled builders, giving volunteers, guiding volunteers to restore old homes for families. I myself banged a few nails, including working in the county. When farmers needed a barn, a barn raising was organized by communities. And the barn was built by many hands. This is the old way, community cooperation. Many hands make light work. Many skilled craftsmen live in the county and I'm sure directly benefit from providing homes so that skilled workers can stay. We can teach people to build, people can share in their solution with sweat and labor. They'll be invested in the community and invest in them. Now is the time for creativity. We can use new technology and new techniques to help people. Do not have to return to the old days to honor the old ways. Now is the time for rolling up our sleeves, pitching in where we can, coming up with new ideas. New homes do not have to mean single-family large structures. Homes can take many shapes and sizes. Do not want to hear about attainable. I don't want to hear about AMI. I don't want to hear, I want to hear about ideas to provide homes for people, people in the 0 to 80% AMI. I'm a civil engineer. I will help and volunteer my time to craft a better solution, any way I can.
Thank you.
Anybody want to copy?
Yes, please.
Paula Dillon. Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Paula Dillon, and I live at 134 Beale Drive. Thank you, Mayor Fay and town trustees, for letting me speak tonight. First, I want to say that being part of the Town Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee has been a wonderful learning experience, and I appreciate even more everything that you all do to help make our town better every day. Decisions are hard, and many perspectives have to be right. And this is one of the reasons why I'm here speaking up tonight. I was here previously to listen to the presentation by Flock Security and hear the discussion that occurred afterwards. And understanding that they are back again tonight and that the trustees will be voting on whether to approve spending $10,000 to $15,000 a year on flock surveillance cameras in our small mountain community, I wanted to share my thoughts. To date, I have not been convinced that the cost benefit is in favor of spending that amount of funding on government-controlled surveillance. I do not believe the crime levels in Unavista, Colorado justify the cost or the use of community surveillance system. I'm also skeptical, excuse me, of the ability to keep control of privacy of our community members with these cameras active in town. I believe the county sheriff department having a contract already allows for some sort of a compromise that'll work between depositing viewpoints. The county can decide to put cameras at each of the major entrances or exits to town if there is a huge concern about criminals passing through Unavista. But when it comes to tonight and the town paying for surveillance cameras, I would be more concerned as a citizen about there being government-controlled surveillance cameras in our small town. My request would be that the town trustees consider to vote no and instead spend our town's tight budget on infrastructure that is needed in town, like repairing our crumbling sidewalks, creating an inclusive community initiative, or helping with the affordable housing initiatives to make them a little bit easier. For any of the many projects that are at the top of our community's needs list, we're working on a town comprehensive plan. Nowhere in there have I heard a conversation over the time about a need for surveillance tools or that there's a crime issue in our town. So let's look at some of the things that are actually in our need and use our tight budget for that. Thank you for your consideration. Yeah, email me in next minute.
Thanks, Paula.
Yep.
Dennis, Dennis Heatt.
Yeah.
When you get to the podium, give your name and address for the record.
I'm Dennis Heatt, 141 North Sandruss Castle Avenue. And I'm here about the flock cameras. And I come from a law enforcement family. And we've had a lot of conversations about flock cameras and their effectiveness. And so I want to urge you to vote in favor of getting them for Unavista because they're a force multiplier. They allow our police force more time and more information. And so I just would ask you to consider that and vote favorably. Thank you. I don't have a wish to make.
Thank you, Dennis. And then we have Mike. Mike Blitzstein. Just give your name and address for the record.
Sure. Mike Blitzstein, 36570 Highway 24 North. I didn't prepare anything, so I'm going off the cuff. I've asked numerous members of local government what is happening with the CPW trade of the ranch that's adjacent to my property, with the ranch that's in town. And I've always gotten, can't answer your question, can't tell you, can't say anything. I don't know why, but I'd like that question answered. Secondly, I want to know what the town is going to do if they're unable to make the trade with CPW and they dry up the ranch land that I share a border with. Because when that ranch land gets dried up and the water turns to domestic use, as I'm sure it will, it's a weak nightmare there. So I'd like to protect my property. I'd like to know what your plans are, if you plan on keeping the land and drying it up, and how you're going to enforce those plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And then Jane, Jane McCracken. Just give your name and address.
Hi, yes, I'm Jane McCracken. And I'm at 16165 Burt Gulch in Unavista. And I'm here to speak, thank you for letting me speak, by the way. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the geothermal industrial plant that Hank Howden and Fred Henderson are trying to put in right over in front of Mount Princeton. I also represent a group called Save Our Arkansas Valley. They're trying to stop this plant. And they have at this point over 1,300 signatures on a petition to stop this industrial plant from going in. At a public hearing I was at in last spring, Hank Howd was talking, and he said that this was the best location in the state for a geothermal industrial plant. And I asked him, well, how many other places have you looked at, Hank? And he said, none. I thought, well, that's kind of crazy because it's within five miles of our town. And there's a little town down in New Mexico called Cotton City. And they're within five miles of a plant called Lightning Dock, which is a 15-megawatt plant. And they say that it has ruined their lives because of the noise. I also know that they have had wells spring up, like it affects their water. And our plant would be right in front of a mountain, so we could have echoing. You know, when the concerts go on, we have echoing going up of the mountains from the concerts. So it could be detrimental to our valley. I don't know of any benefits to our valley because the electric will be sold outside of the valley to the highest bidder. And we already get our electric from, well, we already get our non-conformant electric. We're at our limit from the panels, from the solar panels down by the prison. You must understand that they are leasing. Hank and Fred have leased over 3,500 acres for this plant. They say it's only going to start out as a 15 or 10 megawatt, something small. But they leased 3,500 acres, and it's right in front of Mount Princeton. If you've ever been to geothermal plants, like there's one in Puget, Hawaii, if you've driven through that area, you will think, I couldn't believe Hawaii could be so ugly. It's horrible. And they started theirs out as a 5-megawatt, and they have increased it to a 60-megawatt now. So they say they'll start out as a 10 or 15-megawatt, but why did they lease all that land? Well, it's because they expand these plants, because they never perform to their satisfaction. So they typically always expand them. I haven't touched yet on the valley that we live in. It's a graven, but it's called a graven. It's made with sand and pebble of rock and granite stones. So this is a graven, and we are on a major fault. And these type of plants do, they are, it is a fact that they do cause volcanic, or I'm sorry, not volcanic, they cause earthquakes. We're on a fault. So that's very dangerous for this community. It's also dangerous for our water supplies. We've got eight different camps that use that hot water. We've got Mount Princeton, Pat Springs, we've got Cottonwood. We've got a lot of people that are depending on this water. And it is within also five miles of 1,500 private wells. The last time they dug a well trying to get this thing to go, they dried up a little lake. Tom, do you remember that lake down there that they dried up off of 162 on the way to St. Elmo? So that was very sad. I just drove up, I just drove up Rodeo Road, and there are just acres and acres of elk on both sides of the road right now, right in that area. And it's not the noise, the animals, it's a proven fact also that the animals disperse from the area. And it's not because of the noise, it's because of the shaking of the ground, because they've got these turbines going around. And they also use liquid, it's a petroleum liquid in these turbines. And that heats up, it boils at like 76 degrees. So it's a very dangerous liquid that they use. And sometimes they have what's called surface ponds. So the surface ponds are like stagnant nasty water that they've pulled up. And it just sits in toxic ponds. So anyhow, I want you to consider to maybe having this farther away from our county because we want to preserve the beauty and the pristine of our water and our animal wildlife. We want to preserve this county. So if they could just move that, I mean, there's nothing down south, move it. Move it. So that's my plea, is to not let them, not encourage them to do this in this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane. So that concludes our public comment. Now, we are ready to have a introduction of our new code enforcement officer.
Good evening, board. I just wanted to take advantage of your time to introduce Anita Rowan here, who's going to be joining us full-time in code enforcement, doing a weekend shift, starting it up soon. Getting her through training right now, and she should be out of training very soon and get her out there and doing the job on the weekends, so we have full-time coverage.
All right.
That's a very good thing.
Yep.
Very happy.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay. Now, we are on item A, which is our trustee appointment. So we'd like for you to come forward, Chris.
Yeah.
What is this?
I need a motion.
Need a motion?
Oh.
I'll make a motion to appoint Chris Sturm.
Okay.
Trustee?
Second.
So we have Rowan and Rice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thanks, the motion passes. I'd like to have you join us as a trustee. And Paula is going to give you the oath of office.
Okay. We'll get you all settled here in just a few minutes. First, I need to put your things down.
All right.
Because I need to give you a quick.
So let's get it.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me, I, Chris Sturm.
I, Chris Sturm.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The ordinances of the Town of Unavista.
The ordinances of the Town of Unavista.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of trustee.
Of the office of trustee.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And I need a couple of soldiers, please.
All right.
I'm going to put you over there.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So Jane's public comment had to do with a different geothermal project than the one we're about to hear about. And so there are two, there are basically two competing projects. And we haven't, we haven't heard much about this one with Thermal Energy LLC. Do you want to introduce this, or should?
Yeah, I'll just, a quick introduction. This summer, Paul Connor with Thermal GE and staff, we had some email exchange about this request that would ultimately come for the Board of Trustees. Tonight, we got a, we were able to have a, you know, a little Zoom call in the fall, so staff just understand a little bit more and have since gathered some information that was in the trustee packet. So Mr. Paul Connor is here to give a presentation to the board. Yeah, and so I'll just, I'll turn it over to Mr. Connor. There's a, yeah, introduce yourself, please, at the podium. Name and address for the record, and then we have these slides that he's prepared for us.
Okay, my name is Paul Connor. I live in Maine, Augusta, Maine, right now. I do have relatives here in Unavista. As far as our project, first, I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees to allow me to get in front of you, the mayor, the administrators, and other people that are attending. Thank you. What we're looking at as far as energy is that in the near future, and I'm talking within 2050, the amount of electricity requirements for this country is going to be three times what we have today. To get that, either use more fossil fuels. You can use as far as solar and as far as wind, but the efficiencies of that don't compare to petroleum products or looking at geothermal. So why don't we look here at the Unavista area? When you look at the geological side of it, you end up seeing a major rift, which is a rift that runs from New Mexico up through Unavista. And it is, is called the Rio Grande Rift. And this rift basically allows a thinning of the earth crust. It's like, there was, the crust of the earth under there is like 52 miles. The average crust throughout the country is, or throughout the United States, most continents, is about 12 miles. Here, we're about eight miles. So what's happening is that as far as. So what's happening is that as far as, it's an ideal place, it gives you a lot of heat. And as far as, as you can see there, you can see this rift. Okay, so what does it do? The rift basically is allowing your, your, there's heat underneath it. So it's causing a thinning of the, of the crust. And right now, the, the, the land on this property here is moving three inches every year towards California or to the Pacific. So every four years, you move the foot. Every 12 years, you move the yard. So what eventually will happen is that we will end up, this area here will end up having become a valley or not, not the Grand Canyon, but it'll be a slope. So as far as what we're trying to accomplish, when you look at the, from the geothermal side, there's two ways of using geothermal energy. You have the typical where you have volcanic, at the surface Iceland, Philippines, Indonesia, they basically take your surface heat and transform that into steam, into generating and also heat. So as far as the other way of doing it is to basically find the hotspots below the surface. And that's what we're after. So this technique is a rather new way of generating heat through using geothermal. So why there are other people doing geothermal projects? And as far as our project, it's strictly a project that is economic. And the reason it's economic is that we're looking at a plant that's a size between 50 megawatts and 200 megawatts. So to have that size of a plant, you have to have a heat generating somewhere around 400, 500 degrees. So what we're doing is looking at a way, methods to be able to get deeper. There's another slide. Oh, okay. Well, that's, okay. That gives you, can I walk around? Yeah. Okay, so what this basically shows you is here's the rift. This is the split. Okay, so eventually it's going to split and it's going to fall. And when it falls, that's when the valley is going to return. Now, when is this going to happen? It happened in a thousand years. It happened in 10,000 years. It happened in half a million years. It can happen in five years. Just right now, we don't know. But what we're planning to do is to do this seismic study, which will give us you and us an understanding of really what's going on down there. So as I said, our big thing is we want to produce a plant at a certain size so it's economic. The current projects that are being, you, being done in the subsurface area are basically really not profitable. They're more research projects. And one of the ways you can tell if something's a research project is if you get government grants. We're not getting any government grants. We don't want government grants because we're looking at this thing as strictly as a economic project. So there, okay, yeah, let me go out there. Okay, so as you can see, this is the area that we think is viable for a geothermal project. Here is basically what we see right now. Now, how was this determined? The state of, the Colorado state of mind has used this area in the past to basically train their graduate students. So they'll come out and they've done different kinds of studies, doing magnetics, got different, very surface type. So based on what we now have, we realize that this is the valley or this part here is what exists here. We have no interest in this. We're interested in here. Any question? All right, so, I mean, there's water here. Big parched about. Okay, so what we, what we're, okay. So to basically go out there and do this project, we want to understand what is down below. Okay, so the first step is a professional in the drilling business and then the oil and gas business, which is carried over into the geothermal business. None of, none of the oil and gas companies, we're talking Shell, Chevron, large independents, no one drills a well unless they can do seismic study. Because it tells you basically where your fractures are, where things are underneath. And so as far as what okay, so as far as what we have right now is that we understand from the mountains out what the valley is like, but we want to see what's down below. Now, in doing so, we also want to find out where the different fractures are. Because as far as like you have hot springs down there, you have the, the river. And that river, the Arkansas River, is feeding into those hot springs. And that's where it's picking up the heat, generating that water, generating a hotter area. So as far as from the standpoint for us to go forward, we need to do a seismic study. And this is the part, reason I'm here. Now, seismic study is done with some machinery that generates vibrations. Joel, do you have another? Let me go back one. Okay, let me. Okay, back, back up right here. Okay. One of the things that we want to look at here is, this is, this seismic study we're doing is basically 36 square miles. So what we wanted, what we want to do is to figure out what's down in this part. But there could be something up in this part. No, we won't know until we do, do some seismic study here. Now, at the same time, we also want to get close to the township of Buena Vista. Because we want to see some of the things that are under Buena Vista. So we know what's here as far as the sedimentary part. We don't know what's here, but we also want to make sure we're not going to damage anything when we go to the next step of drilling. Right? So the question came up is, oh, will the seismic study do any damages to the land? To structures? And that is a good question. Okay. A lot of people think that like years and years ago, when you did seismic study, we ended up doing dynamite, dropping dynamite charges, doing all kinds of things. Those days are gone. We basically have machinery that generates a vibration into the ground. Okay, so now you can say about hope. If you bring your, these vibrations to the ground, you close your, a structure, will it damage those structures? There's a, another project. No one more? No, keep going.
That's all that's here. That's all that's on this.
That's all, it's on there. Okay. So there's a company called Geo Survey Systems. And they've been doing seismic studies in populated areas or residential areas. And these seismic studies are done based on the amount of vibrations in the area, but they're very limited in what vibrations are going to the ground. So the, the United States and the International Association of Seismology has come up with a standard. All right, it's called PPE, which is basically the amount of vibrations that goes into the ground. So what they say, and what they set up, is that anything below 2 PPV is not going to hurt anything. And above it is going to hurt it. So let's say that you're going to go, let's say we're going to do a seismic study outside this building. So let's say we end up putting pulsations in the ground of a half of one, or instead of a half. Then as, as, as the data, we would need to be at least 25 feet away from the building. If we want to warn PPV, we would have to be 100 feet away from the building. Okay? So as far as what we're trying to do is that we would go out there and say, have the machine put pulsations in the ground like one PPV. But they would be 100 feet away, which would not enter the building. But we'd also put geophones beside the building, which would end up picking up what we're trying to see down below. Right? So as far as from the standard in the industry, it's very regulated in what we can do and what we can't do. And then from the other standpoint, from a company's standpoint, I'm not going to do anything to enter anybody or any structure within this area. Because one, this project is a long-term project. This study to do the seismic takes basically 45 days. It takes another 30 days to do the analysis. And then to drill the wells is the next step, which is a lot more of a process with the state and the county. So as far, then the next step is to build a generating plant to generate electricity. So so as far as from the standpoint of the residents as board of trustees, I can fully understand what you're concerned about whether the seismic study would do any damage. Now, as far as, can you bring that slide back up? No. Okay, yeah, okay, that's good. This slide. Okay, so as far as the seismic study, as far as majority of it's going to be here. And as far as, there's very little limitation as far as the amount of vibrations we put in the ground because it's pretty open, open. But when we get into the Buena Vista area, we'll basically bring it back to a very low level. So that one, we want to see what's under Buena Vista because it could extend here. Because also, when we are ready to drill wells, we might go under Buena Vista. I mean, today's technology, we can drill three miles horizontal. Maybe some wells have grown up to three and a half. But if the technology is there, depending on where these hotspots are. The lady right forward earlier is concerned about the water area and what you brought up from the surf, from the subsurface. Our whole system, there is no water brought up from, from the subsurface. We create a loop system, continuous looping. Loop ties into a heat exchanger, which has the other loop to the generator. And then, then after that, after the generator, then you end up having a cooling tower, which can be either turned into waste heat to turn for agriculture, whatever you want to do. So as far as from the standpoint of what we want to do is basically do the seismic study so we understand. Plus also, it gives you the opportunity to figure out what's going under here, long-term. Because by now, you have no earthly idea what's going to happen here, but you are on a rift. When we finish the study, we'll know what's here. Also, the state gets a copy of our, complete all our seismic data. So then they know what's going on. So, okay. So when you look at the area where we, we just skirt around this area here, we have no interest in getting into here, everything's south of here. And it's like, we might, might put a machine out here, we put the pulse out and say one and a half PPV, but it'll be 300 feet away from any structure. But we'll have geophones at those structures to be able to pick that stuff up. So our system and how we're doing everything is much different than a lot of other people. Everybody has a different way of doing it. We're not taking the water out. We're not putting any water in. We're creating this loop. Loop, same thing, over and over and over. And it's just a continuous loop inside a pipe. So we're just taking the heat out of the ground into the pipe, going around. So another question came up, or what was brought up. All right. The generating systems that are out there today, and when you go buy most power plants, they're pretty spread out. A lot of steam coming off of everything. Those basic type of the system are basically petroleum-driven. Natural gas, coal, et cetera. These geothermal systems are real simple. Matter of fact, as far as the turbine area or would be at the size of this building, and you can make it like this building. The cooling towers, you can make a little bit different. You can make them look like bars. You can change whatever you, the way you want it to appear to the community. It's a different approach than just how it's been done in the past. Okay. All right. So as far as our first approach is we need to do a seismic study. As a professional, we will not put a bit in the ground or do anything until we have a seismic study. After we have the seismic study, then we'll determine where the hotspots are and what direction they are. Another thing with, from the economic standpoint locally, with the seismic study finished, then people that have, landowners that have property above those hotspots are going to royalty. So it's a good way of determining. So, it's a good way of determining where everything goes. Uh, question is, how many wells it will be drilled? For this project here, eventually it'll be three wells. Three wells should produce two hundred megawatts of power. And why do we want to go here? Two reasons, one, you have the rift, second reason, you're in a population corridor. You've got here, you've got Denver, Colorado, South, so basically, it's a good way, I mean, as far as building a project out in the middle of nowhere, doesn't do anything, you've got to be able to utilize that power and use the byproduct from the power. Because, as far as from the standpoint of the systems that are out there, that are the volcanic type, the byproduct is, they have hydroelectric farms, they have all kinds of industrial things that they use the waste heat off of.
Well, I'm wondering, um, what, what do we get out of doing this? We as a town?
You as a town?
Yeah.
One, you get the, you make the royalty revenues off of it. Two, you have the tax for the plants. It's a tax basis, too, plus you also have employees. And the amount of employees will basically be somewhere between fifty and seventy-five.
Ongoing.
As far as just on the generating side, just on the generating side. Now, if it's, if you take the waste heat and you end up building, uh, hot houses, I think it adds more. Yeah, depending on where the hotspots end up, they located, and where the plant is located, will determine what you could do with the heat. I mean, you could also, like, through many areas of the world, especially like the Chinese, of the total amount of waste heat you use from geothermal, China uses almost fifty percent of the total worldwide market. So, as far as you could utilize that as far as heating, the thing you need to keep in the back of your mind is, before two thousand and fifty, we're going to need three times as much electricity. I, I have, one of my daughters is being approached by a group that's going to build a hundred of these storage, AI storage facilities. They're three stories high, they just consume so much electricity. So, it's, that's what trend's going. You're also looking at trucks are now going to be electrified, or be, you know, electric, some of, uh, just on and on and on.
So, also, there are some negatives involved in this, right?
Oh, yeah, there is.
Uh, I mean, even in the seismic study, right? In the seismic study, there are some negatives. Noise?
Hmm, oh, oh wait, as far as, good point. Um, there was a video that I basically, uh, sent, which is a um, example of one of the studies that was done in Mexico that uses this particular machine in the middle of a residential area. And I have it on my laptop, and I'll be glad to let you look at it. Also, Joel, I sent it to you.
Um, I think we, I sent everyone all the materials that we received, but that, I'm not sure, did you guys get a video? There were some files that I referenced in an email that we didn't get. Then we got three of six, they sent you an email about that, but did not hear about those, but I'm not sure.
Okay, we'll, we'll finish off, I'd be glad to, our laptop, unless you, you know, look at this particular.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just concerned with, what's the effect on our, on our, on our neighborhoods? When you're doing this seismic study with the big dump? What's the effect of it, of, on our population?
Okay, as far as the, uh, the A, they call it AWD unit. The AW unit basically drops a plate, a round plate, and basically puts a, a piston on top of it, and it creates a pulsation. And that pulsation is the noise, you you can, you can hear it if you're close to it. But, as far as the, the machine itself is a diesel-running machine, which is like a tractor, or, or a front-end loader, or whatever, is going to make some noise. But, as far as to do the study near the Buena Vista area, it's only, we're going to be here for about two to three days. It will make some noise, uh, if, if the city has a, a, a limit of somebody does a bill. Uh, if you could tell me that, I'll be able to say yes, it will make it or will over exceed it.
Can I ask another question? Is this an activity? We have any kind of a framework to permit presently?
Um, we, we have discussed a little bit with, specifically with Catherine, I'm not sure if Jeff has been part of that, but she believes it would fall under potential of a temporary use permit, whether or not, uh, there's a temporary use that is considered in the code, and there's administrative approval for this as an applicable use still.
Joel, uh, I can jump in, if you guys can hear me okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I actually, I was driving between meetings, I just arrived at my office, so I can turn my computer on a second and show you my face, but, um, we haven't been able to finish the analysis, but actually, we think that this kind of use may actually not even be a permitted use in the town at this point, under your zoning code. So, we have to do a little more analysis, but I think we're, we're heading towards the conclusion that, um, if it's not a listed use, um, under the code, it's going to be a prohibited use. So, the town would probably have to take some legislative action to permit it. Um, I don't want to commit to that position, but I think that's what we're going to have concluded if we did a full review of this.
And, and Jeff, that's specific to the seismic study, that geothermal, a geothermal plant is a permitted use of the area.
Yeah, this seismic study itself, so.
Also, second question, you have a thirty-six mile area, thirty-six square miles, yeah, or do you have permits from the county to operate in the county?
Uh, as far as, I don't have a permit in my hand right now, but as far as I've met with the director of the county, and the county is giving me the assurance to go, go forward with it. Now, I have to provide him with, from landlord, from each landlord that we deal with, I have to show that I have permission to do so, and I compensate them.
So, for clarification on that, as far as conversations with the county planning director, uh, it would be a notice of activity? And so, if they were to penetrate beyond twenty-five hundred feet down in the ground, that would trigger a permit? And so, since they're not actually going twenty-five feet, hundred, twenty-five hundred feet in the ground, that would be a notice of activity, so not necessarily even an approval process, but just a notice of activity, and so, maybe on that is probably not.
I think your, your entire area, we are such a sliver at the top of it. And so, from the, the whole listed data set, what our purview is in town is so small, I think perhaps we could just table this, and when you get close to finishing your study, we would entertain the review of a special use permit at that time.
Okay, also, as far as from the state standpoint, okay? Up until, uh, two years ago, there wasn't a requirement, a permit for a seismic study, okay? And what caused the permit to become a reality was the fact that a seismic company went into a town and did a seismic study without having talked to the town, and they just brought in any kind of unit and ran it, okay? So, as far as seismic study has been done for year after year after year, when you look at all the other guests. So, as far as from the standpoint, I do need to get some type of statement that you're going to allow me to go forward.
I don't think we're in a position to do that.
Okay, well.
I can, I mean, other comments would be welcome, but we don't have a process to permit it, I think the process, you could come back to us and demonstrate the work that you have done elsewhere throughout this entire thirty-six mile, or thirty-six square mile area. We could look at the results, look at what you have done, and take that under consideration with approving this for this little tiny sliver of your study area that's our town. I don't see where our geographic area is significant to your data set, therefore, I propose that we go last and not first.
Oh, no, I'm not asking you to go first. No, I'm not asking you to go first, I just need to go back to the county and say that, you know, I have talked to this, I mean, as far as, okay, what the state says, the state, the state says that I have to have approval from the county. And if there are any townships in the area, I need to have their approval if I'm going to do seismic in their area, or in their residential area.
And my understanding, I'm sorry to jump in, y'all, my understanding is that you do not yet have approval from the county in writing, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
She was asking whether you have approval from the county in writing.
Okay, do I have approval from the county in writing today? No, I do not. And the process that I'm in is to, one, to see where I am as far as Buena Vista before going forward, because there's no reason for me to go out, or for the company to go out basically to sign up everybody throughout this whole study, and then I come up to you and you go, no. It would just, because as far as going out there and basically getting all of the, uh, signatures or okays from all the landlords, and presenting that to the county, that's what I, if I'm coming into the Buena Vista area.
Yeah, so I, I could address this shortly, so like, you know, this is set for a presentation to provide information to the town on what the study would look like. And so, what we need to do is have the planning department, my office, take a look at this, give them this information, and then provide a response, um, to the, to him about, you know, here's the town's code, here's what the town code permits, here's what it doesn't permit. And then, depending upon that answer, um, you know, he could proceed, or he can, he can address it, and if the town wants to change its regulations, or, you know, do something to, that would basically, um, address the issue, if we decided that maybe your code didn't permit it, you know, that could come back to the board for a review, um, and perhaps legislative change to, to either allow forward or to address it. But I think at this point, you know, the board, you, you trustee, that's not even on the agenda for any kind of approval or representation. It's just on the agenda for a presentation, and then he could work with staff to get an opinion from the town as to what's needed to proceed.
Thanks, Jacob. I'm fine with staff working on this, though I, I would consider it a very low priority, given the other priorities we have, especially with federal funding limits right now, so I propose we wrap up this part of the presentation and move forward with the agenda, if it would please the mayor.
Yeah, if we don't need anything else, it's purely informational, correct?
Right, we're not really, I can't make a decision on it.
Yeah.
So, Paul, would you like five minutes to wrap up?
Yeah, I, I do have, uh, this presentation that was, or, or basically a video of what was done in town in Mexico in a residential area. I'd be glad to let you look at it, well, I'll put this way.
Can you just send it to us?
So, so it sounds like the next step is as far as staff is concerned, is to work with Jeff, the town attorney, to see, um, kind of come up with a little legal, uh, opinion that we can provide to Mr. Connor, as to whether or not it is allowed in the town at all, and, um, if not, then perhaps Mr. Connor could continue to either change the boundary to exclude Buena Vista and move forward, or to continue on with the study everywhere else, and then come back to the town if we want to change the municipal code to allow such a thing. And that's really, once we present that legal opinion, then it's really up to, uh, the energy company to figure out the next steps.
I think we all have lots of various concerns on the actual nuts and bolts of doing this, but I think it's premature to broach those now. The point is, you would be in a strong position if you were to conduct this study everywhere and bring the results back, and then we could entertain that discussion, like I said, I'd like for us to go first rather than last.
As far as from a standpoint, I wasn't expecting, you know, to be blessed tonight, that everything was going to go forward. I, I, what I, my main point was, that I want you to understand that as far as doing a seismic study in the residential area, we're going to be at the park apart, is that I wanted you to understand that if we brought machinery in here, it's not going to damage anything. That's what I'm trying to get my point across, then.
You're doing the study for a reason, it is going to lead to something else, it might not, but it leads to our town.
Okay.
I, I, I would like to just, um, add a comment here that I, I second Mika's comment about, yes, this is something for Jeff and planning to explore, and I would agree that it needs to be a lower priority, considering everything else that we have going on that's directly affecting our town and our citizens, and not a, a, a private interest that has come in asking for our permission. So, is something that I do believe we need to research, but, um, would like to see it appropriately prioritized.
What, one of the points that, uh, I do want to make sure I can come out here with some understanding, is that, okay, so, I go ahead and get all the permits for the rest of the county, and I come to you and just say, oh, okay, we'll let you do this, and then as far as the town itself goes, we don't want this. Oh, as far as from the standpoint, this seismic study is five million dollars. And then, as far as to this whole complete project, it's two hundred megawatt. Which is, you know, it's, it's serious money.
I think the, uh, I mean, I think that the next step, from what I understand, the board's not in a position that we, we need to get that legal opinion to see whether or not it's allowed in the code at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, as far as, uh, I have this.
I think you can forward it to me at email.
This is what, this is what basically what the unit sounds like, it does.
I'm hearing something.
No, you know. It's nice.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, please be quiet, we're, we're going to move on, Paul. Uh, we're, we're ready to wrap up this topic, um, because we just started our agenda tonight.
All right, I'm sorry.
We have some other things that we need to get to.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
But, uh, our attorney will be following up on, on, uh, looking to see whether this would be a permitted use, or whether it would require, uh, you know, a legislative change in our code in order to even permit it.
Okay, as far as trustees, I thank you for the opportunity to present it, and.
Paul, we can follow up via email, we're going to move on with the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so now we have a. Okay, so now we have another tough topic here. And this has to do with whether or not we should buy flock cameras, which are essentially license plate readers and we have budgeted the money for it, but we have not spent it. And Chief Morgan, would you like to talk about this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Trustees. I know it's been kind of a long meeting, so we'll try to make this fast. I know we had a lot of these discussions at a previous meeting. So Mr. Paz from Flock Safety is also here and I'm going to let him speak to a couple of the, I think, misconceptions about the cameras. I'll just start off by saying as the police department, I don't want to give the sense that we're not very aware of the privacy concerns. And when we ask for the flock cameras, and I've asked all my officers if they thought this would be a good resource. And they all concurred that it would. The other agencies have used them very successfully. So when we're asking for flock cameras, I think one of the misconceptions I would address right off the bat, and this was from a letter that was forwarded to the board, is that the officers would be sitting around watching monitors. And that's not how these work. These ideally are going to allow us to be on the streets. Like a gentleman mentioned earlier, a force multiplier, so we can be more proactive on the streets. And if something of concern comes into town, then we can be alerted to that because of the cameras. Then Michael looked at the screens, which I I know another misconception, I think, was the verbiage of video surveillance. This isn't video. It takes a snapshot of a vehicle and the kind of, I guess, existential privacy concern of it. It doesn't even photograph inside the vehicle. It's just mostly the backside of the vehicle with the license plate. I I definitely would disagree that there's not crime in the community. Unfortunately, I think sometimes there's a it can't happen here mentality. On Halloween night, one of our officers, a man tried to shoot him and he had to wrestle the gun out of his hand. About two weeks ago, I was driving home. Our SWAT team, which we're a part of, was engaged with a barricaded subject. And I heard on the radio, the officer say, he's shooting at us and you could hear gunfire in the background. That man's been charged with multiple counts of attempted homicide of police officers. We've just been in communication with Park County and Rancho de Rockies. They had a homicide. They're working in tandem. Our second homicide with El Paso County Sheriff's Office. The suspect vehicles were believed to have been in this area. There were alerts for them. Flock cameras would have been a fantastic tool if these homicide suspects came into our town. And I believe they did, but I don't want to speak to another agency's investigation. But they were looking for pickups with specific identifiers that the flock cameras would have alerted us to. And definitely, our focus here is, and I encourage the board to consider some partnership in this, is public safety. That's our main goal here. And the police officers who are the boots on the ground dealing with some of these crimes, they're the ones that are going to really utilize a tool like this. And I I just asked the board to consider that your local law enforcement outside of Bina Vista is using these successfully. And that your law enforcement in Bina Vista that I think has a combined total of about eighty years of experience believes this is a powerful tool for public safety, to keep our community safer. And again, I do not want to support a narrative that there's not crime in this community. The officers and their families who were shot at the other night would definitely take issue with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does anyone want to or is there anything that we want to hear from Flock itself?
Mayor, I have a follow up to the question that I asked Mr. Paz last time we met regarding running on cell phone reception. And what bandwidth it would bring, what bandwidth it would use, excuse me, and what that would take away. Speaking of the public safety concern, I always am worried. Personally, I worry about my grandmother down the hill. How am I going to be able to call her if we have three cameras that we don't know will affect our already very poor cell service in the summer? Did you get a chance to work with your team to find those answers, Jonathan?
Yeah, I mean, before we deploy, we we do extensive testing on LTE. That's like cellular service. We make sure that it is reliable. I absolutely agree with you, counselor. It's important to have reliable response at any time. So absolutely. And just to kind of build on that point, you know, our our connection to between cameras and the system, it's encrypted end to end. We take security very seriously. But absolutely, before the deployment, we go a step above and we also make sure that even like with some of these cameras are solar powered, that they're able to be solar powered throughout the year. But yeah, their power, they're they are connected through LTE. It's like cell circle.
No, I understand. That's why I asked at our last meeting, if we could get some data on that. You did mention the the same thing previously when we met during our budgeting season. And I was just hoping for a follow up on a little bit more information and details on that. Including, you you mentioned before we deploy, we do testing. Would that be before or after we were to sign a contract?
So after you sign a contract is when
Okay.
All the
You would sign the contract and then you would tell us how how much bandwidth it would take out of our current structure. Am I understanding that correctly?
Just to kind of reframe a little bit, we would have a deployment team out there and we would make sure that that there's, you know, we have a plan in place that we can follow through. Right? But we we go, we go out getting the permits for you. We go out, we do the data storage. We make sure that the the system's secure.
Yes, but that doesn't answer the question about how much bandwidth your cameras use.
I I'm happy to have someone. I I apologize. In my preparation for this meeting, I was instructed to talk a little bit more about privacy related components.
I I'm simply following up on the question that I asked you at our last meeting. So when you said, I'll be sure. So I
Okay, we we have that question. Thanks, Maggie.
I I did ask the light up police after that last meeting if they'd had any issues with that, and Chief Johnson said they had not.
Thank you, Chief Morgan. I appreciate that.
Yeah, just to reiterate, we're in over seventy five agencies in Colorado. We we have not experienced issues around cell service, just to be sure.
I think Maggie's point is we experience severe cell signal coverages here in the summertime. And the concern is one more load on the system. I think that's Maggie's question.
Absolutely. When we deploy our systems, we what we call our technology is infrastructure free, meaning that it's going to use cell service. We're going to have solar powered cameras. You don't have to put wires down. But we we cover the whole span of the country. This has not been an issue in Colorado.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Chief Morgan, we, thank you for being here.
Yes.
We received a bunch of emails from concerned citizens today. And one of the questions they were asking was about the, like, so so if we didn't sign a contract and Chafee County put cameras on either side of our highway or Johnson Village, how would that impact our ability to benefit from this system versus having cameras in city limits? And and what are your thoughts on, you know, that collaboration?
Yeah, that's a good question. And I kind of got wind of it and I was texting Mr. Paz about that question as well. Actually, one of the cameras I was looking at installing was on County Route three seventeen. Because there's a lot of vehicles that circumvent coming into town from the highway and they'll come in that way. And because of the dynamic there, I thought that the best placement of a camera might be in the county anyways. So I talked to Sheriff Rorick, who said, yeah, no problem, whatever you guys need. So I think there's definitely opportunities and it's not a bad idea to say that, hey, can we partner with the sheriff's office? I can't speak for Andy or for Sheriff Rorick right now, but I'm sure he wouldn't have any issues working with us. I think what we'd want to do and with the advice from Mr. Paz is that we'd want to have an MOU with the sheriff's office so that the BVP, the officers would still be able to access them on our cases. For example, like the hot sheets, if we had a hit and run vehicle, you know, making sure we could enter that license plate so that the cameras would be watchful for that. And I think there would be appropriate to facilitate that partnership by helping to make the purchase of those cameras.
Thank you. I think that that would be really beneficial to work as a team like we collaborate with the fire department. And it saves money for both. And they share in the technology. I mean, we've got the SWAT team and it works, seems to work very well together. It would be worth checking.
So would you be suggesting that we that we make an arrangement with the county to pay for part of their their cameras and not have our own? Is that what you're suggesting?
Kind of, yeah. But it wouldn't cost us as much, but we would still maybe it wouldn't cost as much, but we would still, because we really did save a lot of money combining the fire departments and they work well together. We have the SWAT, the special SWAT team that works well together. As far as I know from outsider, that I believe that the sheriff's department and the police department work very well together to get things done.
And and I would support the idea of the additional purchases of some cameras that would supplement my public safety concerns specific to the town. Because some of the current placements of the sheriff's office cameras are going to miss a lot of areas. The one I know of in Johnson Village, it would capture things that would be turning on Trop Creek, which misses a lot of traffic that comes into town. So one of my placements would, I would like it to be on at least the south end of town. So vehicles coming and going, you know, from those directions if they committed a crime in town. Or were coming into town and they were, you know, had been flagged as a dangerous vehicle or an Amber Alert or something. That would give us that alert.
That makes sense.
Andrew. But I think there's a little bit of a request to explore the opportunity to perhaps partner with the county and defray some costs. I think I'd like to also just echo trustee Hykes' question about bandwidth. It shouldn't be too hard to know how much data is uploaded on a permanent basis from these cameras and then look at that and say, okay, is that data upload and download channel? How does that impact? Because I think you're you're certainly aware of our problems with cell phone service here in the summer. And so it's just a question of how much data is actually flying up and down? And will that impact an already rocky situation with self coverage here in the summer? I think that's Maggie, is that is that the gist of your question? I think we could get some answer on.
Andrew, I have to admit, it cut out at the very beginning of your sentence, so I didn't quite hear it. Would you mind repeating it?
I think in addition to exploring the opportunity of partnering with the county, I think we could also ask to get some information on the amount of data transmission that's uploaded and downloaded. So the question is that that data traffic uploading those photos, you know, sixteen times a second or whatever it is.
Yeah.
There's an amount of data with that. How does that level of data, is that massive compared to what our cell network needs to handle or is it minor?
That that would get to the gist of the math that that would answer the question of how it would impact our citizens' communication efforts. Yeah.
Is that kind of information available?
That would be a question for Mr. Paz. I don't know. I'm not a tech guy.
Yeah, no, not to put him on the spot. I just think that's that's something that could be researched. It could be brought back and say, yeah, on average, on average, these cameras use this much. This is the data. This is the data load going up to LTE network that's pushing all the rest of the calls aside when I want to call a gentleman parents and the call doesn't go through. And that happens here in the summer. So if they did their testing in October, it would be flying colors. If they did their testing in late August, it'd be a different test environment.
Yeah, and I feel that would also affects, that could also affect the cameras as well to give accurate data. I would think, just because it's the same as on our
But it should be known, on average, these cameras take this many pictures per minute and this is the data upload. You know, is that a giant amount or is that a minor?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to jump in. So I I'm happy to check in with a deployment specialist. Typically, when I get these kind of requests, I get them in writing. So I do apologize if it seems like I'm I'm shorthanded here. But for the number of cameras that you will be installing, which is under ten, this typically does not have, we typically don't have to inquire too much into what the actual data transfer is. We're talking, we're talking around less than ten cameras. And we we do run tests, periodic tests within each system if and when they're installed. So, you know, you do have that guarantee that we we have done this in the state of Colorado in over seventy five agencies without so much as of any issues. But I'm I'm happy to get someone, a deployment specialist, to make sure that, you know, we don't have any seasonal issues or bandwidth issues. That's, I think, the difference that flock brings to the table is that we want to make sure that your system's maintained. And we periodically do that to make sure that it's up and running at the best way possible, right? Because this is data for public safety and it's life or death situation sometimes when you do need that situational awareness. So very happy to follow up on that.
Mika.
Oh, yeah.
Devin.
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, the board is aware that I am not in favor of this as I brought it up before. And it's, I think it's an important thing to clarify why I'm not in favor of this. And it's not for the license plate reader specifically, but it's more for the data retention and the data sharing, which is the things I have a big issue with. You know, the privacy of our citizens and also the retaining of the data. If it was just taking pictures of the license plate and helping our police be able to identify, that'd be a very different conversation, I feel. You know, there's, you know, if there's a way we could adjust this so it wouldn't retain the data, so we could, you know, because this system holds on to information for thirty days. It tracks the movements of our vehicles. You can search a license plate number and know how many times they've gone by this camera. If we were to not allow that specific part of it, then I could be in favor of this. But, you know, it's also the data sharing as well, because you're taking into account every agency that is connected to this, whether it's law enforcement, HOAs. These are, you're you're taking into account every single agency that is connected to this network. And there's been, you know, multiple instances uses, instances of abuse of this system. And there's also been lawsuits about privacy as well. You know, it's it's I feel like it's a slippery slope when you're getting into tracking of people's movements, which is what this system does. And you can follow and search people's movements throughout this system. I was reading through the packet and this isn't really related to that, but I did find that there was a quote by a sergeant in this in about supporting this program. And I I was looking up these people and he's an employee of Flock, which I found kind of misleading. So, you know, this Sergeant Adam Sem from Vacaville, he was a police officer before, but now he's an employee of Flock. So I just have a hard time trusting this huge billion dollar corporation with our privacy and our data. Plus, when it's a price tag that's going to go on and on for years. Right now, it's nine thousand dollars a year, I believe. But, you know, I don't know what, is that nine thousand indefinitely? I'm not sure. Yes, those are my issues with it. And I'm also looking, I also have a question on what we're doing with this. Is this like, are we approving it tonight or is it coming back for a contract or what exactly is?
Well, that's our choice. I mean, we we could approve it tonight or or we can table it to a date certain or a date uncertain.
Okay.
But, you know, I think I think it's an important question, you know, that the police have have brought up and and something that you feel like is important for, you know, safety in our community. And I I respect that, you know, from you. And and so I I would rather not see a drag on forever. But if we, you know, if we need to gather some information, you know, and table it to a date certain, we could do that.
Yeah, and in my research, I found
Yeah, and in my research, I found that my home state of New Hampshire has state law, which requires law enforcement to delete non-hit license plate captured data within three minutes. And if that was something that was added to the approval, then I would be more likely to be in favor of it if it's something that we're not retaining. You know, if it's something that's just supporting and helping identify license plates and then it's not stored, that would be easier.
Can I add for a comment on that?
Yeah.
Um, the officers in town, we have a lot of different crimes that we investigate where we try to get camera footage. So I can tell you going up and down Highway twenty-four, there's, we pretty much know where all the cameras are. And there's a ton of uh private businesses that have cameras that point out towards the highway or and we get those things for like traffic crashes or um different things like that. We actually had um some pretty severe vandalism outside the lariat the other night, so we were giving their camera footage to try to help us solve that. And the interesting thing, a lot of the camera footage is just poor quality. So we got the suspect vehicle. Um, and we're trying to piece together what the license plate might be. That's something where the flock camera would have solved that case for those those victims. Um, and to your point, Mr. Paz might be able to um say if we're able to set how long it's retained. But most of the cases we work, we try to really quickly get the camera footage because a lot of the places auto delete after a certain amount of time. And as an example, the homicide in Park County. Um, El Paso County had a crime scene with a lot of blood in it and they knew it was not good. Um, so they were looking for the uh individual that lived at that house. And he ended up being murdered and found locally recently. And uh there was another house these individuals went to in Park County where um they murdered that individual, allegedly, and murdered that individual as well. So there was a time lapse from the homicide or alleged homicide in El Paso County to the suspects being located. And that's one of the reasons I would advocate that law enforcement needs the data retained a little bit longer because of time lapses like that where something happens in early December, for example, in El Paso County. And then that vehicle appears fifteen days later, uh maybe going through Park County or coming into Buena Vista. Um, and if it's deleted that quickly, we would miss it and um that's, I I think that would circumvent if we do it too quickly. It's one of the benefits of the camera.
Is there a time period that you would be comfortable with that's shorter than thirty days?
Um, I think thirty days gives us plenty of time. I mean, if if that's uh, Mr. Paz, do you know, is is thirty days negotiable with Flock? How's that work?
We're 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 happy to comply with your policies. You know, you guys are the policymakers. You guys are the decision makers. I I did want to clarify, the data is yours. We don't own the data. We just help store it. So whatever your wishes are with the data, what we've seen in the industry is that thirty days is that sweet spot, right? There are two schools of thought. There's um people who think thirty days is not enough, that they need sixty, ninety days, or we've heard a year, right? And then there's people, uh, as the counselor mentioned, uh, three minutes, right? Um, those two schools of thought contend and compete. Uh, we've seen thirty days to be enough of a balance between, right, privacy and civil liberties and also just the balance between also just basic uh criminal investigations and the ability to be able to actually follow up on any type of crime that happens after the fact. Um, so it's just really up to your policy. We're we're happy to help accommodate. Just if you do three minutes or three seconds, you'll lose that investigative component of our technology and you'll only be able to get alerts. Um, so, you know, we we like to believe this technology can both be proactive where you get real-time alerts. If there's like a stolen vehicle, a missing person coming into your jurisdiction, you want that notification in real time. But also you want that investigative component where you could actually follow up and on real leads and get objective data on these real leads uh to investigate crime.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, I think, yeah, I'm not necessarily opposed to all automatic license plate recognition systems. I think they obviously have their benefits, especially in terms of identifying stolen vehicles, amber alerts, things like that. I think it's Flock that I have a problem with. No offense, Jonathan, but you know, there are lots of articles, lawsuits, legal papers written about Flock's mass camera system that doesn't just track license plates, but tracks bumper stickers, cars, makes, models, and the length of the retention system for the data and the broad scope of who can access that data is what concerns me. I don't want an HOA to be able to track our public members without a, without any reason or cause. I don't love the idea of Target in Denver being able to track a car through our community because maybe they stole something from their store in Denver. I think there are obvious crime prevention programs we should and can support for our community. I think this specific company has broad-reaching implications for general public surveillance without a warrant or reason or cause that I have a lot of. So for that reason, I'm not supportive of a of a of a BV taking on a Flock contract, though I understand that there may be needs to explore that with other companies that have more limited and specific restrictions on data use and access. Um, also, though, regardless of my civil rights concerns, you know, we just saw the Trump administration pause all federal loans and grants this morning. I'm very concerned about the three point six seven million dollars we have in federal loans that have not yet been awarded for things like the Carver and Childcare Project, infrastructure and transportation funding. I know this is only fifteen, ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year, but I'm very concerned about potential budgetary for the shortfalls this year and that where that may lead us as a community. And so making any additional choices feels difficult at this time for me. Um, so I just want to flag that and see if that's something anybody else is thinking about. I saw your email to the board about, you know, our spreadsheet of of projects that may come under folly that through. Um, so I just wanted to flag that as a concern as well.
That's really important. Yeah.
Yeah, um, if I could clarify, um, the um um, financial aspect for sure, we definitely feel bad as a police department, too. Um, there there's lots of things to invest in in the community and and I think the um we would advocate for, I'm sure the fire department would too, that there still has to be investments made in public safety. I do believe this is an investment in public safety. Um, I don't, and I'll let Mr. Paz speak to this. This is one of the things I said I I think he could speak to more expertly is who has access to this because I think HOAs can get their own flock cameras. Um, but no HOA would have access to our flock cameras or any entity, to my understanding, unless we authorize that. If you could maybe clarify that.
Yeah, you're, again, the the data is yours and we we help enable according to your policy. There are agencies out there that only want to share data within their state, within their region, within their county. Um, you know, that's what we're able to enable is how you choose to do to share your data. Anybody who wants access to your data um needs to have some kind of arrangement with you uh like a pre-existing MOU um in order to have access to your data. So if you only want within your town lines, um, right, like only your agency has access to your data and you don't want to share that out, that's something that we can enable, right? Um, we want to protect the whole community and and that's working with you in partnership, making sure that the data is shared as you feel comfortable according to your values and your policy. So no, no HOA can just go into your system. That's not.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
I think the last time we talked about this, I did quite a bit of, you know, I got my PhD on Google, so I could find out anything. But I did look at an awful lot of the different flock camera sites for municipalities where they're working. And on your e- each uh each municipality's report, the bottom line, I think, of the table shows the agencies with which you have MOUs for sharing data. And so some of those, some of those municipalities had, they were sharing their data with dozens of organizations. Others, like we have data sharing agreements with the county of this city and this city. And so I I I think what I'm hearing you say matches what my research showed is that that's totally at the town's discretion to have MOUs with who we share. It's a two-way sharing agreement. Take your way. We would have to have an MOU with an HOA specifically to allow them to get this data. And my looking on the different municipalities' websites, there was a big um wide range of how much is shared and how little, how how many agencies are shared with and how little, how few agencies are shared with them. I understand that would be town's discretion as to who to and who to have MOUs with with data share.
Jonathan, you have your hand up. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, just to kind of build off that point, you know, typically it's HOAs providing data to their local agency. It's not the other way around. You know, they're, they become like a substation. They the HOUs can, sorry, HOA, excuse me. It's been a long night. I'm in the East Coast. Um, you know, they typically um don't have access to like the National Crime Information Center, right? Like HOAs want the protection and they provide that data to their local agency. Um, so then they they, it's a partnership, right? Um, HOAs aren't going to look through the city's data and see what's happening. They typically just want the protection. They want to provide the data uh and work with their local agency.
Trustee, any comments on this?
Uh, just digesting the information on it, I appreciate the fact that there's a a public safety concern uh with the cameras. Uh, I I like knowing that we could define who would get the data. As far as the impacts on our cellular system, I'm not sure that I would even understand what the data upload impact would be. Maybe if there was a way to describe it as it's an additional X number of cell phones in your community, uh, that might be an easier way to to digest the impact on the on the system.
Yeah, it seems like it would have to do with the the density of the image, too, the pixels in in the image itself.
Yeah, I don't, it's, is it similar, is one camera uh sending data similar to, you know, say a school bus full of teenagers that are all looking at TikTok videos or?
Yeah.
How how do you, is is there a way to make an analogy that way so that we can understand?
We can understand.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I i- it's the similar plan as you would your phone. You know, when I kept saying LTE, it's it it three cameras, it's like three cell phones. Um, and it's snapshots. It's not like um, it's not video, right? It's snapshots of back of cars. Um, so, but again, I I I'm happy to have someone, not my wheelhouse, to talk about the tho- those nuts and bolts, but I'm happy to follow up. Um, it just, part of what I I fully understand is that we have a strong presence in Colorado and this is, this is not a new uh component to our deployment plan um on a technical side. But yeah, comparable to a cell phone, three cameras, three cell phones.
Something I I'd like to mention, um, we uh talk about how you share it with other agencies. Um, they offer the transparency portal, which is something we would adopt. It would be on our um department page. Um, I looked at some other agencies in Colorado. They talk about, here's our ARCA agencies. I think people could even download an app to see who we share it with. My initial thoughts is the chief, I'm just, again, I've been a cop for twenty-five years. Most of our stuff we're um dealing with is local agencies. So for me, that would kind of be a start, like share with, I'd look at sharing with um Chaffey County, Salida PD. Um, probably, we do get a lot of things from Canyon City and Pueblo, probably those two agencies we might look at connecting with. Maybe just starting there. Um, and uh, yeah, again, it's 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 our data and they would have to have permission to access it or vice versa. And we would make that very public.
So with a limited number of um sharing arrangements like that, do we have an appetite to consider, to continue considering this? Uh, Maggie?
I I'd like to circle back to Andrew's suggestion earlier of, and Chief Morgan, thank you for reaching out to um the Chaffey County Sheriff's Office in advance for this meeting. I I would like to pursue that conversation before making a decision for the municipality of Buena Vista. I feel like since one of the cameras that was identified by Chief Morgan is in um within that county area, I would like to start with with conversations there and see if there's a potential for an MOU and before investing in something out of our own, our own coffers.
I would like to still very much keep it in the budget. Um, I know that and respect Devon's struggle with privacy. If those flock cameras know that I hit Baylor Drive eighty-five times last week, I don't care.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if it has the potential of saving a child's life, anybody's life, um, I don't care if my license is on there. I don't care what's shared with the. A lot of times our police department is working understaffed. Very seldom are they fully staffed. Um, I believe that not using them is not using current technology. You can't expect good results without current technology. There's improvements in everything. I realize that there is bad in every posi- every um position in life. There's, that there are people that are good and there are people that are evil and we will never change that in the world. And I believe that our officers deserve to have current equipment to do their job with.
Yeah, following up on that, this is a small amount of money compared to the cost of a police officer. I mean, you know, your police officers must cost a hundred thousand.
Probably over if you have the benefits, the equipment and all those things, which we asked for a new officer this year and were denied. Um, and I understand there's there's all kinds of things, but this is a forceful player enhances that. And um my only ask would be if we pursue um communication further with the county is I would need a little direction from the board. Um, I think that for us to do that, I would be asking that they um bring additional flock cameras near near the town that will kind of cover my public safety concerns that would benefit the citizens here. And I think if we, it wouldn't be right, I think most people would agree, to just ask the sheriff of the county to foot that bill that I would ask that we um come up with an agreement of what we'd be willing to to contribute toward that.
And with regard to Mika's comments on on flock being particularly egregious, let's say, um, do we have to be in the same network as everyone else? I mean, I would assume we do. Like with with the county, are they flock?
Their their flock in Salida is, um, I I would assume if um we're going to be sharing hot sheets or information with the county or Salida, that we'd need to be with with flock also. I'm not sure of a lot of other companies out there that offer this. I I know there's mobile LPRs that are license plate readers you can get on vehicles. But um this is something, I think, the the power of the tool is is a broader network. Uh, like I said earlier, if we only shared some of our stuff with local agencies, I think it would stand to reason if there was something dangerous coming toward us from the front range. I would hope that other flock cameras would pick them up before they got here. So I I would definitely start out with a project like this focusing more locally. If that makes sense.
So do we have, do we have enough to direct staff to um come up with a proposal that we could?
If I may, I think a motion would be appropriate, depending on which direction you guys want to go. Three options I've seen is direct staff to evaluate partnership opportunities with the county uh with an uh MOU brought back for consideration at a later date. That's one. Bring back a contract to draft policy consideration, including data sharing, MOUs, retention timeframe. That's Flock specific for the town of BV. Or three, motion for no further conversations associated with Flock. So those are kind of the three avenues that I heard. Um, and depending on which way you want to go, it's probably appropriate for a a motion and that'll clarify which direction staff takes it.
Could you read your second option again, please?
The second one uh is. The second one uh is bring back the contract between flock and BV and the draft policy for consideration, including data sharing MOUs and retention timeframe.
Okay. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion?
A quick question, um, option two, did it have an MOU? Check on an MOU with the county?
No, it was option one. Or it could be a hybrid, we could do both.
Okay, so um, I would lay like to make a motion that um we start with one and see how that turns out.
I would second that motion to work with the MOU with Chaffey County. Um Chief, would you need direction? Uh, I'm sorry, let me just second that motion.
Okay, so we got Swisher and Hike. Is there further discussion?
So what does that ex- so that would mean we wouldn't be in contract with flock, that we would partner with the county, is that, is that what the?
Yeah, yeah. Just not our own.
That we would explore an MOU, not that it's a guarantee, but that we would continue conversations with the Chaffey County Sheriff's Office. That's my understanding, is that correct?
That is correct, and staff can evaluate financial contributions internally and bring it back too.
And and can I ask Mr. Paz a question? If if we did something like that, would our officers still be able to pull up the flock system and enter like search criteria for our own cases? Would we have to um rely on the graces of the sheriff's office to?
I I think it's more the latter than the former. Um, you know, for you, for us to grant you access, you do need to, I think, have subscribed to at least one or two cameras. Um, yeah, I mean, it's just a matter of, I think, budgeting. Um, we can work, we can, we've done arrangements where let's say the the town works through the county, so then the county is the one entering into an agreement with flock and like we will work with them to deploy. Um, but it's really the money coming in from the town. Um, you just have to allocate that money so then we can get the wheels turning for a deployment plan and permitting and it's like four to six, it could be four to six months before we actually roll something out. Uh, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, you know, it's it's about allocating the funds and then we can just work with the county and make sure everything is according to your wishes in that kind of partnership. Um, so it 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 seems like, it's like, does the cart come before the horse or the horse before the cart? Um, it it's just a matter of whether or not you you want to allocate those funds.
I would like to speak.
Okay.
The reason that I'm going for number one is so that everybody here can see how your system works, so we can see how the police department benefits from it. Um, if I voted right, if I made a motion right now um for gung ho, let's go for it, I'm afraid it wouldn't pass. I'm going for a motion where we can see what what, how it really benefits us and we can see some results and ease some people's minds. Show us what you've got.
Yeah, just, I think for if we move down the road of exploring some partnership or MOU with the county, I think, Chief Morgan, part of that research would be how does it work when you guys need to initiate some sort of research? Yeah, that's probably a discussion more locally.
Yeah, I mean, you could just pull it up on your your web browser. So my thought would be, I mean, we we contribute to um Chaffey County Communications for Dispatch Services. So it'd be similar. Um, the deputy on duty, we'd probably call him and say, hey, we just had this vehicle, can you put the plate in? And operate off their graces that, you know, if we request it, they'll do that for us via their the contract.
There could be, if 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 you do some research into this, you you could find out that this is a total no-go, because we we, your department would not have the access you need. That's part of the question, keep that. Because you may find a no-go, but you may find, hey, this this is, this is workable. I think that's that would be part of the research involved that we brought back and that would be encapsulated in in an MOU. Okay, of how those ranges could work.
Yep.
And if there's a dead end, we need to know about it.
So there's a motion on the table and it's been seconded. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So we got um maybe we should do a roll call on that though. Okay.
To be to be clear.
Yeah, let's do a roll call. Please call up.
Trustee Hike.
Aye.
Trustee Bryce.
Aye.
Trustee Rosenhour.
Nay.
Trustee Row.
No.
Trustee Stern.
Aye.
Trustee Swisher.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Uh, the motion passes. So um you have what you need, Brian and and Dean to work on that.
Well, do, thank you. I appreciate everyone's consideration, also the discussion, but it's important to a lot of people and we want to very considerate, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you all.
Okay, uh, the next item is item D, which is um a um arrangement by which money gets transferred among airports and uh Jack, this must be your favorite, right?
Yes. This is Madam Mayor and trustees, thank you for allowing me to present this. Um, we've done this transfer a number of times over the years. Transfer funds from one airport to the other, so, and for the benefit of new folks on the board. So this is a an FAA entitlement. So every airport gets a hundred fifty thousand dollars ideally. But a hundred fifty thousand dollars doesn't really go very far in the airport world. So we developed a consort- a consortium amongst airports, so we're with uh in this case, we're asking for the FAA entitlement transfer from our airport to Julio uh Municipal Airport of a hundred fifty thousand. Because we're saying we're not going to use FAA entitlement this year. So we transfer it to them and then next year it'll go to a different airport and different. Every four years it comes back around to us. So it builds up a bigger purse so that we can do, you know, significant projects. So that's what we're doing right now. So this is transferring it over to Julio to allow them to do, and there's other airports are transferring their funds to that same airport to allow them to do a project in uh twenty twenty-five and twenty-six. So that's the gist of it, it's uh, so we're saying we're not going to use it this year. And we, I'm asking if we can transfer that funds over to the uh Julio Municipal Airport.
Okay. Um, is there more discussion on that?
Uh, like a Mayor, just to clarify for maybe some of the new trustees, this is not money that we currently have. This is money that the FAA has, right? So we're not taking money out of our airport fund. And it just hasn't come to us, we're letting them on paper shift it over, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phillip.
I would like to make a motion that we approve adoption of Resolution Number Eight, Series Twenty Twenty Five, entitled a resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, waiving the receipt of and approving the agreement for the transfer of do fiscal year or whatever FY twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty tw- twenty twenty-five of entitlements from the Central Colorado Regional Airport uh Buena Vista, Colorado to the Julio Municipal Airport, Julio, Colorado.
Sorry. So this is just a technicality basically for FAA? It's not like we're gonna miss out on the money if we move?
Oh, absolutely not.
Like, it's Phillip's.
They will send it every four years. And it allows them to do bigger projects at the airport.
Then as Phillip said, we don't have it anyway, we don't have it, it hasn't been budgeted in.
So we have a motion from Swisher and second from Rice. So let's do a roll call on that too, Paula, please.
Trustee Hike.
Yes.
Bryce.
Yes.
Trustee Rosenhour.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
Trustee Bryce, excuse me, Swisher.
Yes.
Your trustee, Strong.
Yes.
Yeah, the motion passes, thank you. And you're still up, Jack. They have that FAA grant application.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees again for allowing me to present this. So this is our resolution number nine, this one could be found on page one hundred fifty-four. So this is actually money that potentially will come to us. Uh this is a um an application to the FAA to accept to apply for and accept uh funding from the FAA in the for the FAA portion will be five hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. Uh, we also have uh five percent or I should say two and a half percent match for this funding. And uh as well as the state will match a two and a half percent as well. So the total total monies that we'll we'll be using will be five hundred eighty-five thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars. So this is the part of the buy uh, the BIL bilateral infrastructure law funding. And it's um, it's comes from the state, but it's funneled through the FAA. Again, it's not an FAA entitlement, but it's kind of the same kind of money. Um so this is for the construction phase, which we're planning on starting in twenty twenty-five this spring. The twenty twenty-four, we were doing the design phase. We went through all this last year when we passed our application, decided for agreement. And now we're ready to start the construction phase. So that's what we're asking now is to allow the staff to sign the application and apply for the money that FAA has allotted to give for the us to do our project. And that, so that's all this is. There'll be, once we get past this stage, then FAA will authorize the funding and we'll be back here again uh in a few months for the application process for the exact same amount. And then we'll be back again, authorized dibble to do the project, so. Um, right now, we're just asking to apply for the the funds that we're gonna use. And our portion, like I said, with this, with this particular project, with a two and a half percent match will be uh fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars, which is in the, which is in the twenty twenty-five budget was approved.
Great, thank you. There are a motion in regard to this, Resolution Number Nine.
We can push to approve Resolution Number Nine.
Second.
Okay, so we have uh Row and Rosenhour. So uh, let's do a roll call vote on this, Paula, please.
Yes.
Trustee Bryce.
Yes.
Trustee Rosenhour.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
Trustee Strong.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
And the motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
So, um we are at trustee-staff interaction. On light note, I had a nice um invitation to go and view the the expansion at Monarch Ski Area, which involved going up in a snowcat of the, the uh crossing the
Little Park of the mayor's office.
Yeah, it was a very nice little park, yeah.
It was easy.
I, well, I don't think you'd want me skiing.
No, nobody got to bring skis.
I stayed with the snowcat.
Seven eye volunteer.
PT skis?
Oh, yeah, PT skis, yeah.
I don't hear them saying it yesterday. Orality.
Yeah, yeah, so that was that was nice and um, um, I've been helping Sean look at the creek, Cherry Creek. But um, you know, it's just been a lot of ice in the, in the river and um I think, I think we're gonna make it through, it seems like it to me, without um major uh problem with the ice and cold. Other natures. So that's not all I have, I think.
Uh, the only thing I had is uh, we found out at the intergovernmental meeting last night that the bus station will be adding another bus, which is great, because one bus obviously is not enough. So we'll see if two is enough, but I don't know if that's enough either, but it's good, it's definitely gonna be huge.
Hundred percent more than what we have, a start.
Yeah, it's a great start. Devin, you had no room on the bus and had to drive, right?
No, but I know a lot of people who, okay, never mind.
I'm missing a holiday party, because I got denied on the bus.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't know what the, they didn't say what the times or anything are yet, but
It's like about five hours later.
Twelve hours later, I think it's like a morning and afternoon. Oh, good. Yeah, I think that's what I saw. That'll be huge. I don't have anything else.
Um, Sophie, you have anything?
Welcome.
Thank you.
And I, I don't have anything else.
Yeah, it's nice to have you. Trustee.
Appreciate it.
Phillip, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you.
Brian?
Uh, one thing before we forget about it, as far as there's a uh draft letter support in the packet and uh maybe go ahead and get that one taken care of, so we don't skip over it at the very end.
Yeah.
I didn't realize it was a roundabout.
Yep, yeah, we went through a pretty robust public engagement process through that, and actually that is what was selected.
And that'll be by the other selflight, by the RV place, is that what?
It'd actually be on fifty coming uh westbound from Salida into Bonja Springs, and so it gives that opportunity for a sense of arrivals, that's a place.
Okay. The Rock, the Boulder, is this just Thunder Springs?
That's right, I've got a story about that, Paula.
It's out here later. I'll make a a motion to approve uh the mayor to sign the letter for s- support.
Second.
Okay, so that's uh Row and Swisher, uh all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, the motion passes, thanks for bringing that up.
Uh, the other thing I have, uh, Chris is on board, welcome. Uh, we'll talk about kind of advisory board roles as far as liaisons at the next meeting. There's one I wanted to bring up, um, Terry uh Skanga Prior, he's kind of transitioned out, which Greg Belts has taken over as UAWCD's director. Um, Terry resounded initially, I think Greg followed up, as far as the Argent South Basin Roundtable. Um, which is kind of intermediate step, the roundtables were formed at the state level. Um, and Argent, who primarily is funding opportunities for the area, there is in that establishing dog for municipal Redford Beach County. One for the whole county as far as municipal, and they acquired about my interest in it. Um, I don't think it's something that would potentially create conflict, but actually help grow some relationships in the water water world. Um, it's where Conwood Dam, uh that project where UIWCD is pursuing the funding associated with that, um I have applied, had applied for an infrastructure project, water infrastructure project, um, so unless, yeah, if you guys are all right with it, I would do would have to go to the other municipalities as well as the county to get a letter of support to fill that role. Uh, so looking kind of for sue's objection going that direction.
The Conwood Creek Creek, our Conwood Dam project was approved for funding at the board meeting yesterday.
Good.
That's all I have.
Great. So um, do we, do you want a motion in regard to that, or?
Uh, sure, yeah.
Uh, would someone like to make a motion in support of Brian's uh doing that?
I'll make the motion.
Yes.
All right. And so we've got uh Stern and Row. Thank you for that motion. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, good, do you have our support?
Right.
Nika?
Uh, nothing from me tonight.
Andrew?
I attended the airport advisory board meeting last week, not I attended the airport advisory board meeting last week, not as our liaison, but just as a representative of the board. We will cast lots for liaisons, it sounds like, the next, the next meeting. But they asked me to bring back to you guys a bit of a, just a heads up to expect a work session with the airport advisory board sometime soon. They have published rules and regulations, updated rules and regulations for airport users and minimum standards for commercial operations. These are draft documents that I believe are being released to public, released for public comment this week. So I think what the intention is after they get public comment back on those particular guiding, guiding documents, they will come to this board and review those with us. Does that sound right?
So once we bring in the public comment and some of the board again, we'll tidy up both documents and then hopefully it all comes together and we'll present it to the, to the board of trustees for approval for official document.
Yeah, welcome, Chris. Thank you.
Oh.
Thank you.
Um, only, uh, I'll plan to write an address, Mike Woodstein's public comment in an email. I mean, we haven't communicated in a number of years, but of all of them, so.
Okay.
There's been no change since, substantive change since three, four years ago, anyway. With potential, we just have some documentation to review as of this week. Potential, so, you know, I'll, I'll write them and if there's a low, things change.
Yeah, and for all that point, as far as clarification of that reaching out, nobody's said anything. He called on Tuesday, Paul asked my availability. I said I can meet anytime tomorrow afternoon. He said, well, I'm busy and can't make it then, and then showed up to public comment. So, uh, we tried, or I have been trying. I'm open to meeting. We came to the water advisory board meeting as well. The fault was you can also look at the, the resume, the water resume, which is a lot of work, you know, that comes out once a month. But that's also where you get public notice of water rate changes.
Yeah, thanks, Joel. I had forgotten about that. So that'll be good to know. Well, you said there's not much change, but. Good thing to keep remembering.
Yeah, maybe we'll have something to share pretty soon.
Yeah.
Chief Morgan?
Yeah, briefly, I'd like to address an issue. I've heard a couple rumors from people via email. They've inquired of others saying that they've heard the police are engaged with ICE and quote, rounding up the illegals. There's no truth to that. I'm not sure where these rumors are coming from. I read a little bit online. I guess a lot of police agencies are, are the subject of similar rumors. Just to put it out there, Colorado law is pretty specific for police and it can't do versus, as it relates to immigration. And that's not our jurisdiction. Well, we don't have the authority to enforce immigration laws. We cannot detain someone based on their immigration status. So that's the venue of the federal government. We haven't been involved in any roundups. Our last contact with ICE, because we have contacted them about different things, was I think last spring. And it was related to some local Venezuelans who were actually being scammed by a lady in Denver, claiming to be an attorney, providing them identifications that they said, oh yeah, you can use these to drive. They could not. They were fake IDs. They actually had a barcode that led to a website where you could download video games. So ICE seemed very interested in who that lady was. But outside of that, we're not doing any sort of roundup. So if you hear any rumors or whatever, please, um, direct them to us. And if the federal government is going to do something like that, that's their jurisdiction.
Yeah, you sent a nice explanation to Sue Cobb. Is it okay if we use that explanation with people?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I could do that, yeah, because it's very well written and, you know, really to the point. Paula?
I have nothing.
Hey, Sean.
Thanks. It's good to see you.
Jack?
Thanks again for all your support for the airport and for passing the two resolutions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anything from the media?
I guess, Chief, if you could send me a thing about what the PVP is doing, it was grabs the ice too, that would be great.
What we're not doing.
I was going to ask the same question Carly asked. It sounds like it's really well written. No, I just, hi, everybody. Chris, I can't wait to meet you in person and welcome you to the team. But that's it for me. Thanks for dealing with me virtually this evening.
Thanks for coming, anyway.
Of course.
And Jeff?
No, I don't have anything. I just thought at some point I'd love to get up there and say hi in person, no rush, but whenever you want, I'm always available.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, I think we.
A big motion to adjourn.
Yes. So Row and Rosenhour, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I can't think of anything as a gen.
Bye, guys.
Night, everybody.
Thank you.